Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two. I'm gonna put that there so we can...
At this time, I'm gonna call the April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five work session slash meeting to the Banks County Board of Commissioners to order. Need approval of the agenda.
So move.
Got a motion second to approve the agenda, any discussion? Keith?
Uh-huh.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Aye.
But good.
Danny's second.
Alright, first up is FY twenty-twenty-six budget. Where we at, Randy?
We're on page twenty-two, we're gonna go over to Superior Court and Juvenile Court. And just let you know, Maggie, we're on Facebook Live and we're also being recorded. Just for your information, if you'd like to state or record your name and your position with the circuit, it'd be great.
Sure, Maggie Rickman, I'm the Court Administrator for Superior Court in the Mountain Judicial Circuit.
Good to see.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you, it's nice to be here.
This is, this is all new territory for us, Maggie.
Us too.
We're, we're working on, we're trying to go down through the, like the, like the, like what you suggested on the Mountain Judicial System. The, the change of that to altogether, for Banks County, fifty-four thousand dollars. And what would, would the, 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 the judges, is that what we're, we're looking at as far as the twenty-seven thousand?
So what we're looking at doing is moving, currently, the judges receive their supplements from the individual counties. What, moving those all to the circuit budget and just having them shared by the percentages that are of the breakdown between the counties. So it would be just a flat, a flat supplement each month paid by Haversham County and then billed to each county based on their percentages.
So you're looking at, on your report that you have, I'm assuming you got the twenty-seven thousand dollars up there in the first.
That's right.
We're moving that down to the fifty-four thousand dollars, we're increasing that because that's where it's gonna be, come from. We're gonna be billed from the Mountain Judicial Circuit. You'll also see that the Social Security we got for two thousand sixty-six dollars is gonna be moved into the fifty-four thousand. So you're looking at those, those line items will disappear and they'll be added to the Mountain Judicial System and making it eighty-three thousand sixty-six dollars.
Eighty-three sixty-six.
Eighty-three thousand sixty-six dollars.
That's the twenty-seven and the fifty-four.
No, and the two thousand will go into that one.
All will go into that one.
Yeah, that one will become eighty-three oh six six, eighty-three oh six six.
Is that, you agreeable with that?
Yes, yes.
And that's, that's the...
It'll be the...
Okay, the fifty-four turns to eighty-three oh six six.
That's, that's correct, yes.
And we're getting rid of the twenty-seven.
And we're getting rid of the two thousand sixty-six.
Two thousand sixty-six.
That's correct.
Social Security.
Yep. Twenty-seven is, will not remain.
It just moves to the Mountain Judicial.
That would just be one line.
That's correct.
Right.
The, according to, to your, as far as interpreter service, you stated that we could possibly get away with two thousand, you still, you still looking at that?
I, I think so, based on, and, and it's hard to, to figure that number because we've not had a full year of court here to know how often we're gonna be using the interpreter services here. I, I based it off of some of the other counties. So it is hard to know because it, you know, it could be a matter of one trial come along that required interpreters for multiple days and then that takes care of the whole budget. So that was just trying to conservatively, conservatively estimate. This is a harder year with us just starting into the court system here, knowing how much we'll use.
I know that, I know that Juvenile Court is, is, has gone over the top when it comes to interpreter services. I think we're kind of, just, that's a pretty conservative estimate at two thousand, you think we can get away with that, or?
Possibly, I mean, if, if, you know, if it would serve us better to, to estimate a little bit higher and not use it, then, you know, then that would be great, but... I'll leave that up to you all, if you may have a little bit better understanding about what we might see in court.
Well, see, what we looked at, what hit us the, the, this particular year was sixty-three, you know, and then right now we're at eleven twenty-two, but it's, it was...
When I, I just...
That was, that was...
I wonder if there was a criminal trial that involved interpreters that year, because that...
I'm not aware.
That can get very expensive because you have to have multiple interpreters if there's a trial.
Could very well be, we could, we could, we could maybe just thirty-five hundred, half to six, or, or three thousand, half to six, and go with that, if you like.
We're trying, we're trying when we know that an interpreter's needed for, say, one case. Checking around with the other judges if they have cases that might require an interpreter to try to get those all on the same calendar. So it's a little, little less.
Makes it a little more difficult. We did, we did look like we can reduce the court reporter to thirty thousand?
That's, that's typically, and that's for transcripts, our court reporters are paid by their salary is in the circuit budget that's paid to Haversham. So we have three official court reporters for each judge and their salaries and benefits are part of that circuit budget. But this, this line item is for individual Banks County transcript fees, all criminal transcripts that have to be paid. So we typically see twenty-five to thirty in our other counties. So I, I feel pretty comfortable with that.
At thirty?
Again, I'm looking at twenty-three, looking at twenty-three, twenty-four, again, that was a higher year for transcripts. There must have been a lot of criminal trials that week, that year, just with that being the higher year for interpreters and transcripts. Thirty, I feel comfortable with thirty.
Thirty.
Randy, I may have an older copy of the book here, I don't have numbers for secretaries, law clerk.
That's all gonna go through the...
That all goes to the mountain.
That's exactly right.
Because some of those, yeah, some of those weren't even expenses that we typically have in our budgets, but any supplements for other staff are already in the circuit budget.
Right. So those, those all be, those zero out. What you're looking at on page twenty-two, the twenty-seven thousand's gonna be a zero, secretaries is a zero, law clerks is a zero, bailiffs, I'm not sure whether they... That was been kicked around, a little, ten's been kicked around a little bit between us or the sheriff's.
That's staying here.
Pardon?
That's staying here.
That's staying here.
Looks like we didn't have any expense on that line item last year, or the year before, why is that?
I'll have to look and see, I'll have to look and see on that.
Are y'all, are y'all referring to where it's got administrative assistance, where we don't have anything there or in court administration? You don't, what, what do we?
Yeah, so it'll be, if you start at the top, Danny, that department head, that'll be zero. Secretaries will be zero, law clerk will be zero, bailiffs we gotta do some studying on.
That's right.
Mountain Judicial Circuit will be eighty-three thousand and sixty-six dollars.
Okay.
Social Security will be zero, interpretive services will be three thousand. Admin assist, three thousand. Admin assistants, that's in Mountain budget, correct? So that'll be a zero.
That is correct.
The court administrator will be a Mountain budget, is that correct?
Yes.
And then court reporter, we've got it thirty.
Thirty, yep.
Travel, I mean, we've, we've had that at two hundred and not had any expense, or we, what are we seeing the increase there for?
Typically, what we are doing, we, we'd love for these things to be in the circuit shared budget, but if it's in the individual budgets, it's just for training. There are certain conferences for staff, the judicial staff, that aren't paid for by the state, and so that's where some of the travel and education and training would be.
So is there not a travel budget in the Mountain Judicial budget?
There is not, there's no shared circuit travel budget. We had, we've asked to, to put that all into the circuit shared budget, but I don't know what Haversham has, has worked out on.
Now, how is that shared budget formulated?
Right now, the only thing in our shared budget is the, we have the court reporters' salaries and benefits, and we have the supplements for the judicial assistants for the court administrator and the staff attorneys, and then we're moving the judges' supplements. That's the only thing currently in, in the circuit shared budget, and then that's divided out among the counties by population.
So it's like a percentage?
Seventeen point five.
Seventeen point five.
Seventeen point five percent?
So per cap?
Yes. And I think in the IGA that has to be renewed, the one that's in place now is through the end of June, so we would have a new IGA starting in July. And I think it may says, maybe has language to look at the population every five years.
And that would be the same situation with education and training?
Correct.
Correct.
So is, I'm, I'm just wondering why we haven't spent money on that before and now we are. I see the, we had four-fifty the year before, is there required training that's going on that hasn't been completed in the past, or?
Well, it's hard for me to speak on what was happening in the, when it was the Piedmont Circuit, because I'm not aware of what, how they had it structured with training for any of their staff, if it was done through the circuit budget or not. Currently, most of the judges' training is all covered through the state, but it's support staff training. Like, for example, I'm part of the Georgia Council of Court Administrators, we have two conferences a year that provide training hours towards different certifications within court administration, and neither one of those are covered by the state. They're all in the state, they're Georgia, none of this travels out of the state of Georgia.
So is it, is the training that's required, training hours or certain training events?
Well, both, I mean, it's, it's training events that would then lead to hours within, you know, that, say, a staff attorney would lead to their continuing legal education hours.
Are those hours available through online courses, I guess is what I'm asking?
Not always.
Okay.
Not always. And we, we added it into this budget because the other counties have, have had to pick it up in the past, and it... That's why it would be better served for it to be in this, in the shared budget, because when you have, you know, Haversham paying travel expenses and other counties aren't, or Stevens paying, you know, it just, just to have it more balanced.
Do we know what they are budgeting for those line items, or?
Um, the same amount.
So if, so every county's budgeting two thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, we're at seventeen and a half percent of all the other expenses, and there we're on equal footing. So that'd be four counties, so a total of eight thousand dollars travel, eight thousand dollars education and training, is that correct?
I see what you're saying.
If, if that was in the shared budget, our portion would be a lot smaller.
And we have proposed to, with Haversham and with the other counties as well, you know, taking out anything that is truly shared and putting it to the Mountain Circuit budget, and kind of seeing how, what that looks like. Then it would only remain in Banks County, the things that are very, very specific to, like, your transcripts, your jury fees, those things that are specific.
Seventeen and a half percent of eight thousand dollars is fourteen hundred bucks. That's where I'd like to see that stay.
So you think it's gonna be an eight thousand dollar total budget on...
Well, there's four counties and they've all budgeted two thousand dollars for travel and another two thousand apiece for training.
So hours should be what part you said?
Fourteen hundred will be seventeen and a half percent. On jury script, what are we looking at there?
How would you, how would you go about getting that into a shared expense? Maggie, how would that?
Well, and we've asked that of Haversham, to move those things, and I've, I've asked for them to give me kind of a workup of what that looks like in the circuit budget, I just haven't seen it yet. It's, while it's a good thing that all of our counties are on the same budget cycle, it's also difficult because everybody's going through the process at the same time. But then that way, all of the expenses would be paid by Haversham and then billed out at the percentage rates.
And now I noticed that we're also paying a five percent administrative fee to Haversham in this IGA. Is that included in that Mountain Judicial budget number, or is that on top?
Typically, that's already included in the number that they give, they, they usually give a total that includes the admin fee.
Okay. Alright, that gets us to jury script, what are we looking at there?
I estimated twenty-five thousand, which is typically what we see in the other areas, that was kind of looking at the past couple of years. And that's based on actual, you know, jury trials that are, that are held.
And it looks like we've under budgeted for that historically. I'm good with that. General supplies and materials, why aren't we going up so much there?
And that, that's also one that was difficult to estimate because we've only been here for four months and not really knowing how much we're gonna need. There's some computer equipment that I'm hoping to get through the state to help in the judge's office, and just getting things stocked and ready to go in there. That's typically what we look at with all of our other counties in the, the local supply budgets, is kind of what I based it on. But again, it's really hard to know without any history of, of what we need here.
It, it seems that we've used six hundred FY twenty-four, we're at three hundred current to February, have we had a lot more come in since February, Randy, or do you know?
Pardon me?
On, on general supplies and materials, we're at two ninety-eight current to February, have we had any more land against that since then that you know of, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, unfortunately, we, we still aren't quite aware about how we would go about ordering things here, so... I don't know that we've asked for anything.
So, what's your average?
I don't think you have.
Yeah, we have asked for anything. Yes, we have asked for anything.
On a shared cost.
Yeah.
Cream is what, six hundred?
I'd be comfortable with a thousand.
I think a thousand is reasonable there.
Looks like we're gonna have to add it right back to the telephone, though.
Yeah, it looks like the office equipment lease is actually running at five hundred and the telephone...
Office is what? I'm sorry, everybody keeps making too much noise up there.
I know.
The, the, the office equipment lease is actually running at about twenty-five hundred and then the telephone's about thirty-seven hundred. If you go by the trim for, for eight months. So we kind of, looks like we kind of under budgeted that to a certain degree.
Yeah, it looks like office equipment has been under budgeted.
What is actually leased over there?
It's probably the, uh, copy machines.
Copy machines.
Don't we got an extra copy machine sitting out there on the porch? That we were trying to put that thing somewhere that we're leasing.
But we're still paying.
That's my point.
We have, we have, there is a, I'm assuming that's what that is, is that we have a, a big copy machine in the office.
There is one sitting right at the entrance, rolling upstairs.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's...
But I mean, we're paying leasing it, too.
Yeah, we, we just need to get rid of the one we're not using.
Her mate judges, he had it in his office for a while.
Alright, so we're at thirty-seven hundred telephone, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the, and the office equipment lease is probably gonna be closer to twenty-five.
Okay. So can we, since there's been so many adjustments here, can we kind of re-totally this as we give it the rundown?
If you want, if we want to recap Superior Court, the department head line item, which is the first line item, is, is, is zero. The secretaries is zero, the law clerk is zero, the bailiffs we're gonna check into. The Mountain Judicial Circuit is eighty-three thousand sixty-six dollars, Social Security is gonna be running into that also, so it'll be zero. The interpreter service is at three thousand, administrative assistance, that's already ended Mountain Judicial Circuit, so it's zero, court administrator, zero. The court reporter is thirty thousand dollars. The support staff training is gonna remain at two thousand.
Fourteen hundred's what I got on travel and training.
You gonna put fourteen hundred?
Yep.
For each?
Yep.
Fourteen hundred, okay. Uh, the jury script, twenty-five thousand, general supplies at a thousand, office equipment lease at twenty-five hundred, and the telephone at thirty-seven hundred.
Alright, can we run that total, and let's, let's slide that bailiff eighty-eight twenty, let's slide that over, that way we can go ahead and figure it in the total, and if it needs adjusting, we'll do that.
Yeah, I, I, we, we, it's, it's, it's definitely coming out of the department, it's not like we haven't been paying.
Yeah.
It might be, it might be coming out of the sheriff's department, but I'll have to look and see, because he's the one that, he's the one that, uh, maintains who's hired and fired as a bailiff.
Which is, which is somewhat of the court's position of it not being in our budget if we have no...
Yeah.
Okay, we're on, we're going to the juvenile court.
Hold on, I'm, I'm running that total down right quick, Randy, so I can see what we landed at.
That lands us at one fifty-nine eight eight six.
And if you back to eighty-eight twenty now.
No, you were.
You, you under.
So the bailiffs have historically been line item in this budget.
Up until.
Alright, where we at now?
Uh, page twenty-four, juvenile court.
Is that what you're on?
Well, I mean, I was looking at the thing in the previous, but now we're going to the juvenile court, yeah. Whenever you're ready.
I don't think we, I don't think we had much changes on...
I don't think so, the only, the only thing was the court-appointed attorneys, that's what Judge Carswell had given me the increase of that.
And that's a big one.
I know the, alright, this court-appointed attorneys for juvenile...
Why did interpretive, why did interpretive services, we were budgeted five hundred, didn't use any and it's gone to four thousand, what, why?
Well, and that was, that was an amount that was given to me by the juvenile court judge as an estimate about what was needed, I think, based on other counties that we have. Again, it's so hard for us to know without having a full budget year.
We should rely on historical data more than we should, because that estimate, I mean, that's an estimate, but he has no data from Banks County to base it on, really.
Right.
And that, that's tough, but...
Cut it down to a thousand. And our demographics is kind of set different from Haversham's a lot, as far as needing a lot of...
Interpretive services.
Interpretor services, yeah.
Well, I think when it comes to interpreter services, when you're dealing with the ju, with the juvenile, is also you gotta have, you, you gotta have something available for the parents as well, right? You're involved with more, the parents and who are, who are other family members might show up when it comes to that, that's why it's costing so much for, more for interpreter services, and it's also costing you...
But we ain't, we ain't hit that line item in two years.
Well, I, I, I feel like that with the, with the last budget year, they, they just put, like with the juvenile court, they put a lump sum in there. For juvenile, they put a lump sum in there Superior Court, they said, this is what we're gonna do, the commissioners, this is what we're gonna, gonna do regardless, we'll just proceed with that. And you didn't have a history of what it was, they just took it from that one line item and say, okay, we're just gonna give juvenile court a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's it, period.
And make it work.
And make it work.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's why you, you're not having a history with that, as far as that was concerned. That's, you're exactly right, they just told that this is what you got, just make it work, well, you know, to a lot of degree, it didn't work.
If we need to have it match at the three thousand with what we have budgeted for Superior Court and, and see how that works for the year. And, you know, it may work out where it's not something that's needed.
Have a history next year. Guess, is what we're saying. This is a, a little bit of a rare bird we've got here.
Yep. I, yeah, I mean, I, what do we, we did three in Superior Court?
Yeah.
I mean, I can't imagine us, and I may be wrong, but I can't imagine juvenile court being as busy as Superior Court, is that traditionally?
Um, not as, but it is, and, and it's not as busy here yet.
Don't say yet.
We have good kids here, that's all.
That's because Mr. Garrison was on the school board back in the day.
Yeah.
How long were you there, Bo?
I'm not talking to y'all about that, okay, come on.
I'm gonna say too, we had, had three in Superior, two in juvenile.
I agree with that, if she can live with it.
Because, I mean, even in Superior, we didn't have a lot of historical expense. We did that one year, but...
I guess we'll, I guess we'll see what comes up in straight court, probate court here in a few minutes.
And then Mountain Judicial, we're at that forty, that's our seventeen and a half, I guess.
Forty.
About forty-nine.
Forty-nine, forty-nine.
That is, that's exactly right.
Where's your glasses at?
How's them eyes?
And our, God mighty, that court-appointed attorney. How are, how are we getting eighty there?
That was estimated on, the hourly rate for the court-appointed attorneys has not been changed in a very long time. And we're losing folks who are willing to take those jobs. So Judge Carswell upped the hourly rate to seventy-seven, and that's where that figure came.
What, what was the hourly rate?
I don't, I don't know what it was, but it was not competitive with other areas close by where folks could take appointed work. And unfortunately, with the way that juvenile court is set up, they're all, all parties involved are entitled to appointed lawyers.
Well, I mean, was it a twenty-five, thirty percent increase?
I don't, I don't know, I can find out, I just don't know what the, what it was prior to.
Because it, it looks like we tracked the spend about sixty, or sixty-one FY twenty-four was, we're probably gonna come in a little under that this year, in the sixty range. So it looks like we have been under budgeted at forty-one, but I don't know if...
Given them an hourly raise, it's come up.
Well, I mean, yeah, but is it a twenty-five, thirty percent raise, because we're going from sixty thousand to eighty thousand?
Right.
And they made one of them raises. I, I'd wanna know what that raise is and just apply that rate to our sixty thousand number.
I'll have to see, I will, I can find that information out from Judge Carswell.
Okay.
It may take, it may take a little bit of time, she had surgery yesterday, so she's currently unavailable.
Court reporter? We're up. Is that, how, how are we estimating that?
And that, I'm not actually sure where the twenty-six came from on that. The court reporter, um, I'm not sure where that number came from. The court reporter for juvenile court is paid in the, um, circuit shared budget. So I don't know if that, I actually don't know where that.
If it's in the circuit shared budget, we don't need that line item, is that correct? Or is there any, any reason we would have a, a separate line item?
Cause I'm not sure about mandatory transcripts. I don't know that they have the same requirements in juvenile court, um, that superior court does. So that may not need to be there. The only thing would be if it were to cover, if there's one official court reporter for juvenile court and we now have two judges. We have a chief juvenile court judge and a part-time judge. If there were ever to be a conflict where they both had court at the same time and we had to bring in a visiting reporter to take down matters while the official reporter was with the other judge. But I'm actually not sure about that. I can check with Judge Carswell on that as well.
I keep waiting on something possible. I'm, I'm gonna say if we're already paying in that shared budget, we mark it out, but. Then general supplies and materials were at three fifty. That seems about right.
Right, yeah.
According to historical data. And understanding there was a raise on court-appointed attorney, unless they come back and say, yeah, it was twenty-five or thirty percent. It seems like we'll land in the seventieth range on that, sixty-five, seventy. I think we just apply whatever the raise was to our historical spending, and I think that would be pretty accurate.
To the sixty-one, forty-four.
Cause we've got two years in a row that was pretty, pretty consistent there. And maybe, Randy, we can go back and check and make sure that track's pretty good and didn't have any spikes in it somewhere to make sure we don't get hit with nothing.
Yeah, I'll go back and research that and see what, run it for past about three, four years.
Couple of years, yeah.
See what it looks like. We'll, we'll, interpreter services, it looks like we're gonna leave at two thousand. Mountain Judicial Circuit at forty-nine thousand. Gonna go back and run some history on the court-appointed thirty, on the court-appointed attorney.
Seventy-ish.
And then the, um, um, court reporter, Maggie's gonna kinda take another peek at that, right?
Yes.
Ask the judge about that, so I don't think, we'll just make a note for the court reporter as well. Leave the rest the same.
So I'm looking at total, figuring that seventy number, cause I think that's probably where we'll land. One twenty-one, three fifty, total.
Okay. We can do that. Okay.
And Randy, I can try and get that, that number to you when I get back over to the office.
Oh, that'd be great.
If I need to come back over, I can, I'll just.
That's fine, if you can just get that info to Randy, I think that's all we need.
Be a good deal, good deal.
Alright.
I appreciate it, Maggie.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, we look forward to where I was telling Commissioner Maxwell, as of Friday of this week, I mean, Thursday of this week, we will be swearing in our new juvenile judges. And we will be fully staffed judiciary for superior and juvenile courts.
There we go.
Get everybody, get everybody going.
And I personally would like to say, I appreciate all of them's hard work on working, clearing up our backed-up docket, cause it's.
We've got a lot of work.
It was a lot, but y'all were getting it cleared up, I understand.
It's, I, 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 I'm, I'm optimistic that next term will be even better and by January we'll be.
Oh, yeah, yep. Judge Oliver, he's pushing them out of there, I heard.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, good to see you all, I'll email that over to you.
Yeah. Now, we heard you was donating your salary back this year. What page?
Page thirty-one.
Easy enough.
What? She's a superior court administrator.
Easy enough.
Is there anything you wanted to bring up? Commissioners, most for, on the most heart, they usually look at salaries and benefits after the fact. Is there anything you wanna bring up for commissioners?
Well, just starting off, I'm a tight one, I don't wanna see stuff go up.
Let me ask one question before we get started. My understanding, he's got one retiring.
I do.
Okay. Why not, um, would it be possible, if we could find somebody that's bilingual, that we could use for superior court, juvenile court, out of your court, would it be possible to use them as an interpreter?
Well, it would depend on the situation.
Well, I mean, I understand that if it was.
Well, I mean, simply being bilingual would work great in the office. I would love to have a bilingual clerk. But to be able to be an actual court interpreter and interpret in the courtroom during, during cases, they have to be licensed.
Okay.
And there, and I mean, and that's not a complicated thing. If they speak, you know, that language, they can get licensed. There's just a little cost that'll come along with it, there's a little training course they take and all, but, uh, I'm not sure the cost of it. I haven't looked into that personally, but if.
Look into it.
I would love to have that.
If you could get one and it would work to help save us money at other places.
Cause I know, I know currently the magistrate court clerk speaks Spanish and we use her frequently. I mean, she, she, we'll go to the other offices if we have somebody in the office at the time, but we're not, uh, she's not a licensed interpreter, so we can't use her in the courtroom. Uh, and I'm not sure who superior court uses for theirs. I heard what they were budgeting for theirs and I'm not asking for near that. But, oh, I am asking for a slight increase in our interpreters', uh, budget because same as superior court, we're have, we're needing them more frequently. But I have the ability to schedule things a little better than superior court can as far as, you know, days that we would need them. So I'm only wanting to schedule my interpreter every other month for one day and they charge two hundred dollars a day. And I don't anticipate him increasing that, he sets that price himself. And so I'm just asking for basically six days a year to bring them in and I can try to schedule our docket to where those needing that service will be there those days. This prosecutor, that was what was discussed toward the end last year, right? The prosecutor was from back in December, it came from the change of circuits, uh, and that was when I, when I did come in December and requested a three thousand dollar increase for the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And that, uh, would also translate into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget being, you know. Yep, six higher. You know, so. And that was directly related to the, the circuit change. The public defender, is that, has that been discussed or? We haven't really discussed it. The, the public defender, it's, it's just more, uh, the request on that one is just to kinda put it more on an even footing with the prosecutor as far as their daily charge. Uh, and when I came in in January, I did change our public defender due to some issues we were having. And I can say that our public defender that we have now is doing a much better job. Uh, and I have not spoke with him about this. This is just a potential of if he comes to me or raises his invoice amount. I hope it doesn't increase, this is just a plan in case it does. If, if there is no increase, what would that yearly expense be? Uh, currently it's four hundred dollars and I'm requesting five, so it would be twelve hundred less. Let's stay with that, tell him he can't have no more money. And, and he very well may not, it's just, I wanna be prepared if he does. Yeah. I don't, I don't wanna come back mid-year asking for more money. Then the rest of that's all set in stone, getting rid of audit fees.
Audit fees, the, the commissioners have made a change and we will not have any audit fees in your.
Okay, my, my, I, I wasn't sure of what all those audit fees were, cause I, they, they don't come to me, so I wasn't sure what they were.
We're gonna make a change on that, so you don't have.
So I can take those just out of my line items.
That's correct.
We reroll the audit fees on them.
Audit and legal will be zero.
All of that stuff. Next page, you have legal fees of five hundred, that's gonna come completely out as well.
Oh, I ain't gonna argue that at all. Uh, technical fees, I, I don't even know what those really are for. What are we using those for? That would be.
Most of it's, it is gonna be for either software, do you have some software? Or it's for computers and monitors and things of that nature, but do you have any software that you use in particular?
I mean, we use the Icon Court Management Software.
That's, that's where that.
Is that, is that what that is? Do we know how much it costs? Is it a monthly charge or is it free or? They, they don't come to me, so I'm not sure what they're.
I'd have to look, but it is a one, uh, just a one-time cost, a certain amount, probably.
I know for the. I'm sure Renee is listening in the office, if we can get some info on the Icon. Oh, well, and I know the. Court Management Software fees. I know the current budget amount on it is, you know, around twenty-six hundred dollars, but I, I'm not sure if we've spent. Looks like up to February this year, we only had two sixty-five in it.
It, it's, it's coming though.
Yeah, I just wonder how much it is. And then travel, I don't see any real big change on the travel budget. Um, I'm actually hoping to see it go down, uh, as far as, the only thing I know for certain is there's a few conferences that, you know, I'm required to go to each year. Uh, but most of those, well, so far, they've all been in Athens. And I don't get a hotel room for that, there's no need to. I know at the end of May, I'm, I have to go to Savannah for three nights. Uh, but I, the hotel bill ain't nowhere near on that. And then October, well, I'm, don't hold me to it, but I wanna say the hotel for that entire trip was around eight hundred. And I know I've gotta go to Savannah again in October, and I'm assuming it's gonna be around the same, so that's, uh, I'm thinking that line item's probably a little high. You know, it might could come down some.
Go down to about two thousand?
Oh, I think that would cover it, honestly.
The May one will go in this year's budget, you're going in May, so that wouldn't.
And then for the October one, but now it, it will be the last three days of May, so.
As long as it's in May.
It's the fall season. And well, and, and I understand, I think Renee's either already cut or fixing to cut the check during the next week or so. Alright. Oh, education and training, oh, that's, well, that's what's next on my mind here. She was listening.
So where'd you come down to on the, uh, travel?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, okay.
Uh, that Icon software is nineteen hundred and forty-four dollars. So two thousand's about what you need.
Two thousand, he's stayed there.
I thought it was pretty close to two thousand.
My family bought that mail check off.
It'd be two thousand.
Yeah, it'd be two thousand.
And that's if they don't increase, I don't know if they do, I don't know when they change. Tell them they can't.
They don't really tell you, they just.
They just send you a bill.
Send you a bill.
It appears to be down a little bit.
And now, I don't know how fast it's gonna work, I checked it before I come up here a while ago, but, uh, the technology fee resolution that I'd asked the commissioners for, uh, that has made its way through the House and the Senate both with a unanimous vote from both, and it has now been sent to the governor's desk, it's just waiting on his signature. And once that's signed, and I have no doubt he'll sign it, that'll actually take effect July first. I, I hope to start actually collecting that fee, uh, it'll, it'll start collecting on things done in July, but I don't expect it to actually come in till around September, start, start coming in. And then it'll come in in small increments and it'll build it up a little bit. And, and the estimate was for a full twelve months of that in the fourteen thousand ish range? Yes, uh, and that's just based on, you know, the last year or two's worth of traffic citations, things of that nature. And if it maintains at that, I hope to actually cut, like this technology that, you know, the, you know, well, y'all already took legal fee out, but, you know, the, uh, technical fees and things of that, I hope to. It'll, it'll supplement a lot of that. Well, I hope it wipes them out.
It'll just be revenue.
It'll be revenue coming in that supplements all of that. I mean, I can assure you, I'm looking at every way to cut these numbers.
Uh, we can tell you did your work.
Oh. So, and now on the education and training too, uh, with Ms. Dottie retiring and we are currently trying to find her replacement, the, the new clerk will need some training, but I know that we had already submitted for Ms. Dottie's training and it would be in her name, I would just have to call down and get the name switched out. But was that already paid? Cause it was gonna be in July.
I would not think, I would not think they would've been paid already this in July.
But that, the, the class that she was gonna go to, which a lot of the training that the clerks will take is online webinars and things, I think hers was a hundred and seventy-six dollars. And Biggie's got a couple that she's gonna do as well, uh. I, I think at three thousand necessary this year, cause I mean, you'll, you'll have something you gotta do, the new clerk will have something she's gotta do. And, you know, not sound, sound like the other ones, but you know, I'm, I'm four months in, I'm still learning what some, some, where some of this money's going. And if I can find a way to cut it, I will. Uh, the office equipment or general supplies, that's, that's just the office equipment. And we go through a lot of paper and a lot of ink. Yeah. Oh.
I don't think you're gonna cut that any.
Um, I don't think we'll cut, I don't, I really don't see it going up, but I don't see how we could cut it. Just, we can use a lot of supplies. Oh. And I guess the office equipment lease is.
That printers.
One less printer.
It's one, it's one less printer.
One less copier.
Oh, I mean, I know we only had one and they come in and switched them out. And the one that was in the probate office got moved out into the hallway next to the security station. And I didn't find out till a couple of three weeks ago that they still had both on my bill. Uh, when Renee called asking me how many copiers I had, I said, well, I got about one. So she gave me the number on it and I went out there and it was the one in the hallway. Oh, and so I don't need it, it can go wherever else it needs to go. Yeah. Oh.
Back to where it came from?
Back, well, I don't want them.
No reason to pay it if it's sitting in the hall.
I mean.
Hey, one thing, that thing's got a lot of discussion.
It has.
This budget period.
That one copier.
Copy machine out there, it's gotten a lot of attention.
What are we gonna do with our lives if we get rid of it? Yeah, and as soon as it's gone, everybody's gonna want it.
Gonna need it, we'll have, we'll have to turn right around and get at least another one.
Probably right about there.
Oh, I don't get the telephone bill, so I don't know how much it is. Oh. Their expenses. Uh, the, the line I'm on with preserving books and records, uh, there currently hadn't been, as far as this, this year, there hadn't been any expenditure on it. Uh, but there's pending legislation on us having to go to an E-file system and all, but we still have to maintain, uh, as a court of record, we have to maintain a copy of everything and in most, in most cases, we have to have the originals. And the, if you've ever been in the office and seen in there the big red books and it's the same ones that Tim uses in the clerk's office, those, you know, break down and have to be replaced and then some, you know, we just have to start with new ones every now and then. Uh, there's a few of them in there, it's probably about time that, you know, we had to get a new one and start a new one. And those books, they're expensive. It blew my mind when I seen them.
Couldn't have then, or would you feel comfortable with that being up? Or replacing some now or even?
I, I actually think, oh, as long as we're looking good on most of the other things where money wouldn't have to be moved around, I don't see any reason why we can't cut that one in half.
Okay, good.
Cause even if, uh, even if I need to buy some, I'm not gonna have to buy that much. Yeah, we can get it a little at a time. Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna have to buy four thousand dollars worth. Alright, we all need to get up, stand in line, shake this man's hand, cause his budget went down voluntarily.
Big time.
Now, we gonna do away with the four thousand.
Part of the reason his budget is down is because we pulled the, uh, one of the line items out.
Well, just legal, that's five hundred dollars.
Now, we pulled one out. What did we pull out? Audit fees, yeah, we pulled the three thousand.
When we address, when we do get to addressing the salaries and all, I know that comes down the line. And I know everybody's gonna be asking for this and that and, uh, all that, uh, and I'm no different, I'm gonna be asking. The main thing I'm looking for in mine is to, is to get my clerks. done a little better, especially considering I've got one that's been here for twenty-six years, and you can just about go to McDonald's and make what she's making. Oh, and I'm trying to cut enough down on this that I can offset enough to get them some. And there's also, uh, which doesn't cover, none of the line items in this covers it. Uh, we're also the, uh, vital records custodians for the county, we handle all vital records, birth certificates, marriage, or death certificates, things of that nature. There's a fee for each one of those, and under state law, I collect fees. And those are not county fees, uh, those are, uh, by law, I can keep every penny of that as a personal income, I voluntarily chose not to do that, there's no, uh, there's no local legislation to cap the amount of those fees that it can be, and so my, uh, my plan is to use part of those fees to offset any increases with.
Do we know a?
We, we currently do submit, we currently do submit all of the fees into the county. And there is a stipend on top of my salary that is for a portion of them. But I waive about seventy-five hundred of it. And with what I am, just giving heads up on the salary stuff, what I'm gonna be asking for down the line, well, between the new clerk, the offset of pay on the new clerk, and what I'm wanting to do with the, the chief clerk, it's gonna, it's only gonna amount to about thirty-three hundred and sixty dollars of a difference. And I'm submitting about double that to the county in those vital record fees.
So right, last year, we were budgeted two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars for the, for the probate.
Yeah.
This budget, as we just went through it, is at two sixty-two ninety-three.
To what?
Two sixty-two ninety-three.
But you would have to, to be square with the other one, you'd have to add the eleven thousand back for the audit fee.
No, because audit fees is not, well, let's see, hold on.
It's added in that one, it's not added in the other.
It's not in this one, yep.
Right. You're good.
Balance it out.
Yep.
Yep, you're good.
Cause we can, we can play with most of these line items and do our best to get them down, cut as many of them as we can. I'm, I'm more concerned with my clerks, I wanna make sure they're took care of, cause without the clerks, the office shuts down.
We need to have HR look at where they land on the pay scale.
Who'd you say was retiring, Dottie?
Ms. Dottie's retiring. She wants to become a full-time grandma for her new grandbaby.
She gonna watch her grandbabies.
And Kim, she's retiring at the end of June, and her husband's retiring in August.
One thing about this budget, he's working on generating revenue too, I mean, so.
Oh, and, well, and, and I can't, I wanted to try to get some percentages together on it, but the way, I'm not the most computer savvy in the world in our court software, I know it's probably got the potential to do it, I just don't know how to make it do it. Uh, here over the last couple of weeks, I've started, uh, addressing our fine amounts. And we have a lot of code section under statute that we oversee through Traffic Court, Gaming Fish, and all of that, that have not been addressed in ten years or better. Uh, I am looking at each individual charge that can potentially come through the Probate Court, Traffic, or Fish and Wildlife. And adjusting those fines accordingly. And it's, it's, it's a process, it's gonna take me a few weeks to get through every one of them, I'm talking probably two hundred fifty, three hundred different code sections. And I'm having to look at each individual one, uh, and, you know, there's several that I've already found, and when I say several, I mean seventy to eighty that I've already changed, where, uh, we were, our current fine amount would be a hundred and eight dollars, and the code section says minimum nine seventy-five.
So we, we were charging less than provided by state law on some of these fines.
And.
Is that for fishing without a license or something, I mean, what are we paying?
That one in particular would be for hunting wildlife at night, blind and wildlife, oh.
You gonna go broke.
I mean, our, our current fine amount, as of right now, for reckless driving, is two hundred and sixty-eight dollar, I'm sorry, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. And we can find that up to a thousand, so it's gonna get changed, it's gonna be moved up to seven fifty. Uh, I'm not changing any of the speeding amount, as far as speeding citations, cause they've been, they're, they're used so frequently that they're, they're pretty well maintained and updated on, on a routine basis. But a lot of these charges that we don't use very frequently haven't been looked at. And if you're going from a hundred and eight dollar fine and bumping it to nine seventy-five, because that's what the state statute says it's supposed to be. You know, that's gonna make for a big change, and I was hoping to be able to put some numbers together on that, but I just can't work that computer good enough yet to do.
So there's a state minimum ma- or maximum and minimum recommendation on fines, like say parking violations.
For most fines that come before the Probate Court, the maximum's a thousand dollars, now that's under, that's under certain situations. Uh, and, and it's, now, certain things, we can increase that based on number of offenses in their history, things of that nature. And not, not to give a specific of who it was or anything, but I'm real proud of our new solicitor that we're using, he's a bulldog in the courtroom. Uh, we recently had a second offense DUI that he pled to a five thousand dollar fine. And that's, that's a record, it's legal, that's the maximum he could go after, and he, he went after it. Oh, so I mean, we're, we're trying to address a lot of these things, but it is a work in progress. But I hope by the end of this coming budget cycle, we've got it locked in, and then next year I can say, well, I know this is what it's gonna bring, and this is what it's gonna do, right now, I'm still in a little bit of a guessing game on some of it.
How, how is the fines broke down for, say, like a hundred dollar fine? How much comes back to the county and the?
On your standard citations, when they go through the courts, the bulk of it does come back to the county general fund. Uh, but then there's, it's broke down in percentages, the, uh, peace officers' nudity and benefit gets some, the sheriff's office, or the jail fund gets some, then there's the sheriff's retirement, the probate retirement, uh, the local crime vic- victims assistance program, the Georgia, uh, cl- uh, Clerk of Courts Association. There's eight or nine different hands in the pot.
Yes, sir.
But the, the general fund gets the bulk of it.
Is the county versus the city, is that broke down any different that you know of?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
Everything's the same.
No, it's a him, it wasn't me.
I mean, I've, I've wrote a lot of tickets in the city, but I ain't never overseen a ticket in the city, so.
I'm gathering my evidence. Nothing to do with you.
Chris got a parking ticket, Tobey Island this weekend, he a little sour about.
And I'm bad sideways about it.
Nobody sent me any parking tickets, so.
That's what I wanna know, I wanna know, uh, what the maximum fine, they've got a scam running down there.
But I would strongly recommend that in the coming weeks, once the fine amounts change.
Yeah.
Don't get a, don't get a ticket for parking in a handicap spot in Banks County.
That's right.
Oh, no, we're, we're looking to cut as much of this as we can and bring in, you know, additional revenue that we can, and do it as, you know, as fairly as we can to everybody.
Yep.
Oh, but I mean, state statutes give me a mandatory minimum on a lot of the charges, and I, I plan on abiding by what the law states and charging what the minimum is that law says I'm supposed to charge.
Works for me.
Good job.
And I hope to see that become an increase.
Y'all got any other questions?
Thank you.
When will we aim it, looking at, when are y'all gonna kind of?
Salary stuff historically at the end, when we see if we got any money left.
Didn't know how fast y'all plan on moving.
That's right.
Let me, let me make sure I follow up on getting the right figures that you.
Randy's gonna run this down.
We're, we're, we'll look at the clerks, you, uh, as you mentioned, get HR, and then also the public defender, we're changing back to forty-eight hundred, am I correct on that?
So how, so we're gonna leave it at forty-eight hundred, but if he gets a, if he does request, or if he starts invoicing me at a higher amount? Just, just so I'm clear on what to do in that event.
Tell him not to first, say, don't do that, and then after that, we have contingency that, that could handle a reasonable increase.
Okay.
Then you got the audit fees, you're gonna reduce to zero, you got the interpreter fees, kept the same, the legal fees will be zero. Travel, we're gonna reduce it to two thousand dollars, and the, uh, preserving the books, we're gonna reduce to two thousand dollars. Correct? Good deal.
Yep.
Alright.
Any more questions?
I'll do it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Kim. I'm gonna go back to work. Thank you, Ren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Before we get Tracy up here, we'd like to flip over to the next page.
What number, she?
Uh, you're going to go to, um, let's see here. Public Defender. Which would be page thirty-three. The, the only thing we have on that right now, you see that a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars on page thirty-three?
Eighty-three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Next page, oh.
That is, that is strictly the percentage from the Mountain Judicial Circuit.
Thirty-three's public. Which is up forty-one thousand dollars from when we were at last.
The, the average fan, they got them at three hundred and eighty-two thousand, Stevens County, two hundred and fifteen thousand, Rehber County, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and Banks County, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, or close to one, more like one fifty-seven thousand. That's the seventeen point five percent. That, uh, now that seems like, uh, I was asking Maggie the same thing, it seems like an awful lot of money for the counties, close to eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for a public defender, uh, for these four counties, but I guess we'll, we're just using the percentage that they're giving us there, so.
We, we may further examine this IGA by the time it's done with two, cause I'm, uh, feels like we've lost a little control of the budget. With the, with the circuit swap, because, I mean, they're, they're basically presenting a number and saying you owe us seventeen and a half percent of this.
And I don't know that our crime rate equals theirs.
Equals. It's, it's based on population right now, which I could see a justification for doing it that way, but it should be based a little bit on workload too.
We were told going in for the Mountain District, it would be a lot cheaper on this. So far, it's looking like it's costing us a lot more.
Yeah, I mean, every, every one of the departments is up.
And I don't know. But now, Randy, that said, there's no guarantee if we'd have stayed in the Piedmont Circuit that it would've been, it would've stayed at a hundred and sixteen thousand either.
Yeah, it could've gone up some too.
I mean, it would've, I think, didn't, didn't we?
It's kind of, it's just, it's kind, you kind of run into the same thing when you run into the district, you've got state employees, it's paid. Uh, you've got, uh, state benefits that's paid to these employees, it's, 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 it's just a higher uh, than what probably would be at a county level in some instances.
It may actually be cheaper. Because we don't know what kind of a raise or what they would've asked for.
What an increase it would be now.
They're exactly right.
So, I mean, we're, we're just looking at what that number was from last year. And last budget, we cut that number to the bone, if you remember, did we not?
We did.
We did.
So that's not an accurate number.
It was cut.
A more accurate number would be to look back three years, come forward two, and then average that on up, if.
Because, see, the, even this year, that is not even fifty, well.
Well, we come out at January one.
But with this current IGA, we've lost the ability to cut the budget to the bone.
But still, that's still not gonna put it at more than fifty, sixty, forty percent or whatever, left, oh, so I.
We, we budgeted a significant amount less than they asked for last year, didn't we?
We did, Security Court, Judiciary Court as well.
Do you remember how much they asked for?
Um.
One thirty-five something, wasn't it?
I've kept, I've kept a record of it, I don't know exactly what it is.
That'd be a good thing to go and look at.
Whatever they submitted, I still have.
It was pretty high.
Okay, yeah, it was, it was a significant amount, a significant amount more, I believe.
I think it was one thirty-five.
Alright, moving along.
Tracy, you're up.
What page are we on?
So what we're gonna do with that, just leave it like it is for now, till?
Yeah, we have no choice now, we're contracting, seventeen and a half percent of that cost.
No, we can do that, we're.
What do we need to do, one or the other folks?
We can do, you wanna, once that contract is, is wanting to do, let's get the contract out of the way first.
What page is that on?
So, is what happened, I've, uh, filled out an appearance form for last Tuesday, when, when it was just gonna be a work session, because I will be out of town in May when you guys have the nightly meeting, and then it got turned into the budget meeting. So I just wondered, could we go ahead and, this is a contract where they pay us, we don't pay them, and I was just gonna go over and make the assignment.
Alright, I move, we reconsider the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, second, reconsider the approval of the agenda, Keith?
Uh.
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 Uh. I move, we amend the agenda to add.
What's the?
Um.
It's Deanna Specialty Transportation Contract.
Okay.
Transportation contract?
Yeah, transportation contract.
It's for the senior center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended, unit discussion. Keith?
Uh.
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 Alright, transportation contract.
So this is Deanna Specialty, they hold the, uh, senior center dollars from DHS, the state. And they give the Northeast Georgia Senior Centers a portion of that money to pay for trips, bring in seniors in and out. So this contract, they will pay us fourteen thousand dollars, unfortunately, this is this year's contract, we got it, we got it late. So this will end June the thirtieth, and then I'll have to present you guys another one, it may be the first of the year before they get me that one. But, um, I just need to have this one signed and approved, so that we can get this submitted back to the state, even though they've already been paying us some off of this.
I'll make a motion to allow the chairman to sign the Deanna Specialties contract.
A second.
Got a motion by Chris, second by Keith, to allow me to sign the contract, in the discussion. Keith?
Uh.
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 Easy enough.
Thank you.
I guess I should've said approve and sign.
It'll be alright.
Yeah.
Make sure you get it right.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll work harder than that.
Now, bud.
Now, we're on the.
Which one are we gonna do for our senior center?
Senior Center, it's on their page sixty-six, I'm not sure where you.
We had that number.
No, my pages never line up consistent, but that's okay.
Now, just to let you know, uh, the audit fees on the senior and the audit fees, well, also on public transit, we're, we're putting them in a different department, you're not gonna be hit with your audit fees anymore. It'll be, it'll be zero.
So, so this right here just goes to zero?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Essentially already at zero on our, mm-hmm.
Now, we're probably gonna have some adjustments on health insurance, we don't, we do not know exactly where that's, that's at right at the moment. But, uh, more than likely, it will, the, the amount that you got budgeted in your department now would probably go up, um, just to let you know.
Yes.
Did your salary drop one dollar?
It, it, it probably, it's dropped per, salary split between senior and transit.
I just say it's down one dollar.
It's down a dollar.
It's a dollar less.
I rounded at the wrong, I rounded it the other way.
Hey, who do I need to talk to, Arlene or?
I need that dollar back.
You, you did almost as good as last year, so.
You what?
I'm missing a close.
I'll be needing that.
Okay, go ahead.
Carrying on, wellness and transport, looks like we're up a little bit there for the coordinator.
Yeah. Are you on page sixty-seven?
You're on page, you're on the wellness, transportation coordinator salary in the senior center coordinated salary.
Yeah, I did not fill any of that in, I always let Arlene.
Okay.
I've been told that that's okay to do that.
Yeah, we, I get with the HR, and they, 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 uh, give me the exact figures on that, so it should, that's what it should be as of, without any changes, unless y'all make.
Yeah, that's, that's, as it stands now, that's not a raise.
That's exactly right.
Alright. Um, overtime, looks like we were just keeping that line item open, is that correct?
Yes, we try not to get any overtime, but we've always had that hundred there, just in case, um, something unforeseen happens.
Insurance, you say you're going, that's gonna get some adjusting, Randy?
Probably, I believe.
Life insurance, so, rest of that set, next page. Garbage about the same. Tires and tubes, what, so this is for two of the, what, what vehicles are included in this budget?
Okay, so this is for fours, so we just put tires and tubes on the, the two buses, that we mainly primarily just drive for trips. So they're gonna be good, but probably by spring of next year, they're, they're possibly could need tires. And then this is also for the other two county vehicles, one is a two thousand and seven Explorer, one is a twenty-one Ford Escape, little SUV. So I just, I really have four vehicles, that don't all need tires at the same time, we try to rotate it out, where one gets it one year, one the next, and so I put that back up to like two thousand.
Where do we get on, do we buy them from local shops, or how do we do that?
Go to, Preach at most times, Preach will give you state.
Yeah, we, we do all of our work through Preach, and.
You under state contract with it, tires.
State contract, right.
Yeah, it's DOT kind of, especially for the transit, we want one. Unless we ever get a county shop that does all of our maintenance, that's a different setup.
I couldn't imagine the expense that would cost.
Um, let me draw your attention to this, uh, five-two-two-oh-three, the building maintenance. Look, I, I put that number there because at the time, Kenny is still kind of breaking down my AC. I think he's got it rebuilt. Everything's working well for now, but, um, we also have to have that, uh, that big generator inspected once a year by SD Solutions, and it's like five hundred and fifty dollars to six hundred a year when they come and inspect that. So I understand that thirty-five hundred's out of there if y'all want to look at that, but I just know we've had so many issues in the building and with different things that I wanted to make sure that I was covered.
What are, so we got the generators five hundred recurring?
Well, I think, I think they may have had to do some work on it. Most of the generator contracts are in Kenny's department. You know, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars in there on his department for, um, service maintenance.
So this generator expense would be in here?
Well, I got an invoice for it.
But if it, if it, if it, it may have been, it may not have been charged to you, it may have been, because most of the time what's in his budget is just the service maintenance on the, for generators in the whole county. Now, they need additional work done on them that might, that's probably could be a different story. There might go to the individual.
So is the generator and air conditioner the two main concerns right now?
I think the air conditioner's completed.
He, he finally got my air conditioner fixed. I don't know where the invoice, I don't know how much that cost. He says for now, we're up and running, but I mean, he's had to look at it on several different occasions. But speaking about the invoice for the, um, I did put that in my department because when she sent, when Renee, Renee sent me the invoice, it had my fee and a couple of others, and we split it out in our departments, which I did not know that that could have went in Kenny's. So anyway.
I'll look, because if he had, if he had did additional work on it, it very well went into the senior center building.
So.
It's, there's just a going out and ma, just did a general maintenance, uh, per year on a different generators. That's what's included in the twenty thousand dollars. Minor, uh, just the, you know, at the ones at the, you know, cell towers and the fire departments and their, their place sales.
Now, there's, there's still a little bit of that twenty seventeen splosh left, correct?
There's, that's correct.
The last time I talked Kenny, he said there was still a little in there.
I'm not sure what else still needs to be done at the senior center as far as the building is, but it's in, we, I am maintaining that amount in the seventeen.
But, but an air conditioner could be a justifiable, justifiable expense of that?
It could be.
And I think he's got my gutters on order, or there's something with the gutter.
So let's leave that at fifteen hundred, and anything we have over that, we'll use the remainder of that twenty seventeen splosh on.
Yeah. Okay.
And I kept my vehicle equipment at that twenty-five hundred because, uh, Mr. Chairman, as I spoke to you in our meeting that we had, so I still have that two thousand and seven Ford Explorer.
Mm-hmm.
We drove it yesterday, no issues. It's still good for delivering meals, taking, taking clients home, whatever, but it's not going to live forever, so I just, um, wanted to have the means if I needed to have some more done to that or the other vehicles.
And that's something we may need to look at is surpluses of vehicles out.
Because we've still got that splosh for, yeah, county vehicles.
Before a vehicle gets that old, while it still has some value, we may need to kind of.
Feather them out.
Yeah, kind of, kind of move them out with a little bit.
Is a, uh, this is a little off topic for budget, but for what you're doing, is that Explorer the most feasible, or would some type of, of minivan be feasible, or what, what would be the best?
A front-wheel drive minivan or even another Escape, I, I need to be able to put at least maybe three people in it and fill the backseat and, and the extra back with, uh, boxes for males on wheels. Front-wheel drive works good, and that's a rear-wheel drive. It, it'll do it, but there's certain driveways we go up and down that we need to drive the other car, so we switch them out when we can. But just things like that to keep in mind, because some people's dirt roads and driveways that we go up and down, it's, it's kind of tough. So we, we can take those little front-wheel drives places that we can't get them.
Get kind of a spec list on a good van, and let's see if we get some quotes on that.
Yeah, the little Ford Transit front-wheel drive, those are, yeah, some of the other senior centers have those as well.
So let's, let's do that. Let's back some of that vehicle and equipment out, and let's just go ahead and plan on trying to get us a good van for the seniors.
Yeah.
Because I mean, last thing we need is them riding around in oh-seven and break down in the middle of summer.
It's been a good one. It was passed down from the EMS, so it's, it's been a good one for the county, but, but, you know, I'm just sure eventually.
So it's a zero out.
I wouldn't say zero out. I'd say five hundred dollars.
Okay. I thought we had another Escape up at nine-one-one. They weren't using, they needed a four-wheel drive. I thought.
I think there was several of those bought at the same time.
There's an Explorer, the Escape here.
We got the Explorer that was four-wheel drive, but there had an Escape up there that, uh, my, my, Deidre used to drive.
Yeah.
Is that the one you're driving now?
Mm-mm. So I got one. I think Deidre got one.
You counted the.
Does, can we hear drive Deidre's own?
We got one here.
Yeah, okay.
There were three of them.
What year model is this Escape you have?
Uh, it's a twenty-one.
It's a twenty-one, so it's not. Mm-hmm. I, I.
We got three of them. Deidre had one, we had one, and then she got one.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's half a million in that twenty-two splosh for county vehicles that has, that has not been touched.
Only just, just a, a minor amount on toward the corner.
And that's, that's one of the oldest vehicles we have in the fleet, and I feel like our seniors.
And I, I guess, I guess the health, the, uh, health department down here got that.
Mm-hmm. And I, I think that's being reimbursed as well, so.
Yeah, he had that in his budget, I believe.
Small amount, and I would say you had it untouched.
Yeah. So I, I, I think we back that vehicle and equipment out, and let's, let's get them something good to ride in.
They're great on gas. They have plenty of room, and, I mean, they really climb the, the steep driveways well.
With, with the understanding that that one's getting surplus, not passed around to.
Yeah, somewhere else.
Somewhere.
And find out where that other one, he's talking about that.
Mm-hmm. Need to look into where that Ranger went, too.
Yeah.
Make sure it's turned on in.
All right, so we're backing the vehicle and equipment down to five hundred.
Okay.
Because we're going to have something we ain't going to worry about. This senior citizen services, that's a weird line item. What's going on there?
That's a, that's with, uh, the reimbursement from Legacy Link, which I guess you're going to be changing from there. It, it, that's when they purchase the food, and then we get re, reimbursed back from Legacy Link. So really, the only amount you need to keep in there is about a hundred dollars, just to keep the line opening, uh, which, which I need, which I need to add in there, but that, that normally will.
It fluctuates.
It, it fluctu, it does fluctuate, but it easily boils down to coming back to zero.
It washes out.
It washes, it's pass-through, yeah.
Always has.
But we need, but we need to keep it as a line item?
Yeah.
It is. That's part of it.
Yeah.
Now, that will change, but that's still a few months out. Um, we will actually contract with the food company ourself moving forward. Um, so that number is going to shift a little more.
It'd be, we'll be paying out to a different company, but we'll still be getting the money back in from Legacy Link.
So we won't get an invoice from Legacy now. We'll get one from the food company, and then Legacy gives us our state and federal funding money to put against it.
Okay. All right, uh, travel?
Yes, I went over in my travel, so I thought that we would go up. It's, it's hard with the, even if we go to a conference in a hotel or whether we're taking the seniors places, it's hard to get a couple of hotel rooms and, and food for three, myself and two employees is all that I have for, for less than.
And, and this is used on the trips that we're taking the seniors on, correct?
Yes, the seniors pay for their own way, and then we just provide for our, um, employees to be able to escort and chat around.
Y'all got any issue with that?
No.
Mainly. Education and training?
Yes, education and training, if I could keep it the same, we've got a class that we've got to take next month. So that will be our CPR, AED, first aid, and then next year, in that twenty, end of twenty-five, twenty-six, we all have to do passenger safety training through the state, so we have to pay for that class. Driver improvement, we are required to take that. Then we have to go back to another class where we do passenger safety hands-on training. And then I will have to take my twenty-twenty-six, uh, manager's drug class as well. Got a couple of classes coming up.
So you have to take CPR every year or every other year?
Every other.
Uh, do, can our fire department people come in and train you?
Yes, they usually come and do a whole day for us, and, and we have spoke to them about the way it's combined here, but at the same time, we're still trying to run our transit that morning and that evening, so they try to come and do a whole day. We shut the senior center down, and we try to get it all done in a timely manner. And I don't know if it'll work out to where we can do that with Arlene or not, but, um, he usually just comes over there.
General supplies, same deal there.
Mm-hmm.
Office equipment lease, and I guess we got a copy machine there, too.
Yes.
These stuffs got everywhere.
And what do I love it, by the way? It's amazing.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to find me a business.
We in the wrong business.
Well, there's one over the courthouse that sit down and hold her.
They're, they're so nice.
You don't know the history of this copier?
I, I don't. I just know I love my copying.
Every department we've got's got a two thousand dollar copier sitting around. Annually, two thousand.
And we got one extra.
And one at home. Over at the jail or courthouse.
I just kind of put that the same every year, and I just looked at him to change it a bit.
It runs, it runs, you're right.
Taylor, do you see what I see here?
What's that?
The twelve thousand dollar energy and electric bill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've got to do a study somehow or another. I don't know. We, we kind of went over this.
And my other concern, looks like we were under budgeted anyways, because in twenty-four, we had eleven-eight-five-one, twelve thousand dollars, basically.
Yeah.
But by February of this year.
We're already, uh, is, is that accurate? And we hadn't hit the heat yet.
It doesn't seem like it's accurate. We'll have to check that, because that's, that's, I mean, that's not even close to what the trends move, running.
Yeah.
This, uh, it couldn't be eighteen thousand dollars.
And surely we ain't going up five thousand dollars a year.
No.
Electricity.
And after about two thirty, we turn the lights way down after the senior.
You would be surprised how much it's gone up.
Yeah.
You would.
And you know, that is a huge investment. There's no.
It's on Georgia Power Day of.
And you've got gas also.
Steels are low, though. Yeah, what, nine foot? Yeah.
I know it.
But we've, we've really got to look into it.
We, we need to fix this to study on every building we got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if we can have a one-time expense of, of fixing windows or wherever this stuff's going, door seals. We get need a lot of.
Yeah, we got new windows.
We have someone who lives in this county that's done that for years, years, and years.
We do.
Well, you going to leave it at twelve or?
I, I think right now we're leaving it twelve, but let's have Randy kind of verify the.
Yeah, see, I never.
And it looks like that may have to go up.
That's what I'm saying.
What I'm scared of.
Yeah.
Telephone. Here we are again.
But you know, why is, if we had forty-two this year and we've only used less than two thousand?
Since February, though.
In February, so how much more you thinking that, will it get up to?
I don't, I mean, I don't think so. I just kind of kept it the same. I see that by January, it was just ninety-two.
Trend on it, Randy?
Twenty-eight hundred, twenty-nine.
Okay.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
That's our trend.
Let's do that, man.
Always.
Do we want to go with trend on that?
I mean, I'd go three thousand.
No, twenty-nine's good. He said twenty-eight something.
And I think it's the same thing on in, on gasoline.
On gas, I think we can live at three, because we had twenty-eight hundred, actual twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
We're at fourteen hundred in February, and we about to buy something that's better on gas.
So three's good on that, I think.
That would save, yeah.
So they all go into three thousand?
Three thousand?
Keep the foot out of it.
I will.
It looks like the same thing on gasoline, you know, essentially.
Yeah, we're going to pull that through here.
It's coming down.
All right, give us that run.
Let's go back, and I'll, I'll, um, we'll put in a hundred dollars overtime.
I keep hitting my mic.
We need to take that away from you.
No, I moved it three times. I keep hitting my mic.
The audit fees is going to go to zero.
Okay.
What is?
Audit fees.
Okay.
Building maintenance is fifteen hundred dollars.
Right.
Vehicle and equipment is five hundred dollars. Senior citizens will, will put in a hundred bucks. Energy and electricity, I'm going to double check on that. That seems too high. The telephone, twenty-nine hundred dollars, and the gasoline and diesel, three thousand.
You get travel at twenty-five hundred? Oh, never mind. I, I had something different, really. That is twenty-five hundred.
I got, I got twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Hey, Tim.
Working for me.
That's the one left alone, anyway, ain't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, Tracy, how many seniors are you approximately servicing now?
So we have forty-eight on the roll, but we usually only have about twenty to twenty-five that are regulars.
They, that's coming in up here?
Yes, sir. That is pretty fantastic, I think. So, you know, it depends. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but we have a calendar where we rotate events and different things. So of course, on Bingo Day, MedLink comes by once a month. We'll have a big crowd when they come. Just depends on what's going on, and if they have doctor's appointments and other things.
Hey, I guess on page, you on page sixty-nine, the transportation, public transportation?
She lost another dollar.
Audit fees is, that's the same. We're going to remove those, Tracy.
Gonna do that away.
Are we at here?
Page sixty-nine.
Tracy lost another dollar.
I sure did.
Look at that.
Come on with the dollars.
Randy, why can't we do that now?
I just said if you're looking or not.
Your salary's definitely going the wrong way.
I'm telling you.
For the love of the job.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, if I didn't love my job, wow. I kept the tires and tubes the same. Uh, we average about twelve hundred miles a month on our transit buses. So we've just gotten a new bus, so it will not need any tires for probably a, a year or a little bit more, but I will need a couple on my twenty-two bus.
So what do you, uh, how many drivers do you have?
We have two drivers and two buses.
If we know we're going to need two tires, we can do that for a thousand. I mean, we got a thousand.
We already replaced two of the tires on that twenty-two bus, so we should need two more coming in at some point. Probably will be.
Is that a four-tire bus or a six-tire bus?
It's a six-tire bus, but usually our inside tires are, I mean, even if we had to get the four tires, Preach can always get them within my budget. I, I talked to your mom. She does a good job.
They're good people.
Yeah. That was a free.
So we, we, we think we need two tires this year?
I know I need two, but, but there could be a possibility of four. We have replaced two already on that bus. And you know, our, our, it's like I always say, with transit, it's either really, really slammed busy, and you're running to Athens and Gainesville and all the out-of-town places, but right now with MedLink in here, it seems like we're going out of town a little less.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that greatly helps.
That helps.
Because it doesn't put those, uh, miles on the tire.
Now, let's go ahead while we're replacing two tires due to the age of the other tires and replace four tires on those things.
Just do four when it's time.
Because if they were to.
Own the rear.
You know, going as hard as you go and as much as you go, if one were to bust, you're going to have to call.
Yes, and you're.
Somebody in to do that. Let's do that right.
You'll have passengers on that bus.
Yeah, absolutely.
Safety first.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then the vehicle and equipment line, is that just for those buses or?
That's just if we have to have, well, we have to have oil changes every three thousand to four thousand miles, and that's just if anything else happens. You know, any repairs needed to be done or, or whatever. And then that travel there, that five hundred, that's, GDOT has not made me travel the last few years. However, they keep saying they're going to start holding their manager training and, and drug training back in the Macon area. I just kind of left that money there. It's been a little different since the pandemic, but, um. I just kinda left that money there. It's been a little different since the pandemic, but um, I, I'm scared to get away from that. And then them hold a, a meeting and me have to be there. It would, it would.
Do you ever bet a five hundred dollars on?
Uh, yeah, usually even more, but I reduced it, I think. I don't know, maybe around the pandemic.
All right, education and training.
That is our classes. So the transit has to do the same classes as the seniors now. We have to do the passenger training through the state. Then the dip, which is your driver improvement, um, and then your passenger hands-on safety. And then usually I can split my drug classes through these two departments as well. I went down a little bit on the, um, general supplies and maintenance, cause that's mainly just transit supplies. So, um, I felt like six hundred there would be, it's, it's still more than what I spent last year. In case we had to have a copy machine or something out of the way.
Okay. Uniforms at one fifty. Telephone, here we go again. We need a full study done on phone expenses.
Yep. Copiers too.
Least the copiers ain't going up.
Has the transit got a, a copier?
The, the actually, coordination office does have a small desktop. The, uh, big copier is on the seniors.
Okay.
You could probably go down to eleven hundred dollars on the telephone. Eighteen one a year before.
But why has it changed at all? Is what I wanna know.
You, you budgeted, yeah, you budgeted a thousand.
But we only spent eight ninety-one in twenty-four.
Well, I guess that's probably, that's probably not, that's probably cell phones, isn't it?
No.
It's not.
That's, that should be split. I'm not sure how we split that out, but it should be, transit has their own telephone line over there and it rings differently.
And that's got the internet in on it too.
It, it, it looks like it runs close to a thousand to eleven hundred dollars. I'd bring it down to eleven hundred. I'm not sure if the, the diesel's running, it could probably be reduced about a thousand as well, but. You probably come down to eight thousand in diesel too.
Yeah, I took it down to nine.
Now, that's not gonna affect, I mean, your, your, your contract here is over on the senior side.
Oh, yeah, that's senior. Yeah, this is different.
You probably come down to eight thousand on the diesel.
So we, we're gonna do the telephone eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred.
Because it's seven ten now through February, so that's probably gonna be pretty close by the end of the year.
You have a few more months.
Mm-hmm.
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred on the telephone. We, we think you probably get away with eight thousand.
Eight thousand on the diesel, you think?
And then gasoline, you go into eight?
They go into eight.
Yeah, fifteen hundred. It's staying at fifteen hundred. All right, give us a rundown.
Give a recap of the, of the tran, the transit would be, uh, we're removing the audit fees on page sixty-nine. Seventy, we're going to change the telephone to eleven hundred dollars and the gas, clean and diesel to eight thousand dollars.
Works for me. Y'all got any questions?
Yeah, I think that, yeah. Definitely. I guess this is what we do at our out-of-town system. Yes. Hey, are we good?
We're good.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate what you all do.
I don't know, whoever he's got scheduled. Hey, you want me to sign it quick or has it got a bunch to fill in?
Randy, what page, Mr. Harper, on thirty?
We are, let's see.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thirty.
Well, yeah, we'll get it.
Page twenty-five, all right.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five.
What page we on?
Page twenty-five.
I'm sorry, what?
Page twenty-five.
All the way back to the front of the book, I tell you what.
How are you, Mr. Harper?
Good.
Good.
You dealing with Judge Oliver this morning?
No, he's finished. We finished yesterday.
Did you?
Yeah. He, uh, he took seven pleas yesterday, had a good day, no jury.
It's better than.
We're still working on that. We're, uh, it would have been nice if I could have said, don't come in at all. That would have saved us fifty people coming in. But we got on the phone and called as many as we could, say, don't come in, period. But we couldn't get them all. And fifty people actually showed up, so, which is good. Uh, we cut a lot of that out. But we're, we're working on trying to get it down so that we could either say, call after twelve o'clock on Monday about coming in on Tuesday. But if you got a big trial that's gonna start on Monday, it's not gonna go, it's gonna go anyway and you know that. So you gotta work a little harder with them on that. And they don't do that. They don't do that anywhere else. They just come in and pay them and they leave. Whereas we're trying to save money.
Oh, yeah. We got on that first page, Tim, this audit fees here, we're gonna, those are all gonna be zero in every department now. Put them in one location. We're doing the same thing with legal fees as well. They're gonna go to zero.
So that whole first page is set, basically?
Uh, no, on the first page, y'all wanna change that part-time to a full-time.
Why would that be?
It's, uh, it's getting busier, Keith, and it's to the point where, uh, we're probably gonna have to start having two people in court at a time rather than, uh, one, at least on the criminal side. And I do as much court as I can, not can, but Heather does all the criminal court and all the juvenile court. She can handle that by herself. Not a problem, yet. But then, when it comes to civil court, I can go up there and stay. They can stay in the office and everything's okay. If, uh, if we have one out sick, it's, it just throws everything in a bind. I had both of them out one day, or scheduled to be off the same day. And, uh, and it wasn't planned. It just happened that way. And, and I'm fine by myself, but if something comes up, you're stuck. Uh, it's just getting to the point where we're behind more than we need to be. We don't need to be behind on some of that stuff especially, uh.
Were you saying that, that by going to the mountain district, we're clearing up cases that we had?
We are.
We were way ahead on schedule?
We are. We are clearing up a lot. As a matter of fact, we, uh, we talked about it this morning and I'm going back this afternoon. And I'm gonna pull all the open cases from nineteen ninety-eight. And yes, we do have open cases from nineteen ninety-eight. It's kinda embarrassing to say that, but it's true. Nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, on up through there, we've got open criminal cases. Now, on the civil side.
Why is that?
On the civil side, after five years, I can dismiss a case. If there hadn't been any action on the civil side, I've cleaned the civil side up tremendously. But on the criminal side, I don't have that, that authority. So we've got a lot of criminal cases. I'm gonna print all three judges a calendar from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand seventeen. We're gonna pull those cases and either put them on the calendar and dismiss them, prosecute them or something. We're gonna get them, we're gonna get that cleaned up.
How, how do we get to the point where we had all those open cases? Is that?
I don't know.
Yeah, you did.
Well, if you start, if you start looking at it. If you start looking at it in a way, nineteen ninety-eight, uh, Joe is charged with DUI or whatever he might be charged with. Well, he don't live in Bakers Canyon anymore. He's moved to California. You got a bench warrant on him, but who's gonna go to California to pick up the DUI? Well, that bench warrant's still active. And most of the cases, I've found, the old, old, old stuff is stuff that's just bench-horned and it's just sitting there. Now, why did we, why did we not do a bench warrant, anti-bond forfeiture and collect that money? I don't know. Uh, but it's, it's, it's stuff that's gotta be cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
And we are, uh, I talked to the ADA yesterday and we have more serious felony cases. After we get all this cleaned up, we got more, more serious felony cases than we've ever had.
Tim, I have a question. Uh, when you're talking about the, the, the numbers you've got here for salaries, is that already incorporated into the three full times or is that?
It's not.
So all of this is gonna change?
It'll change. It'll change from a part-time to a full-time, yes.
But that includes the part-time, the two and the part-time, but not the full-time three? Okay.
And right now, and, and, and of course, this budget won't take effect until July the first. So right now, uh, I've got two high school girls that I'm gonna put to work and with my project at the old jail, that I can get them up there. I don't have time. I do not have time to go up there and work.
What, what project, the old jail?
The, where I'm getting all my files and order and all shelving. And, uh, I'm gonna put them there doing that. I'm gonna have them down at my place doing stuff, but they can't work for two hours a week, two hours a day. Three o'clock to five o'clock. So I've got two of those. That'll still not even be a part-time, it's a salary. But I can use them through this budget, the rest of this budget year and get a lot of work done. And, uh, they're both good girls, came recommended by the school and, uh, they'll, they'll do good and help me out of a bind there too. And I trust them enough that I think I could use them if I needed to down there too. But, uh.
Tim, one of our savings that was touted in front of us for the, uh, move to the mountain judicial system was, um, getting cases and getting people out of our jail faster.
Right.
Are you seeing that trend happening now or is that kinda?
I saw that, uh, this week and last week. Last week, we sent six people. We sent six people last week out of our jail to another system.
Yeah.
Yesterday, we sent five people out of our jail into another system.
When you talk about another system, you talking about a state system?
State system.
That way, it wouldn't be no county, no county.
I believe that we were told that as long as, we were housing, we were responsible for the costs associated with things such as medical.
Right.
And things like that. But once the day they were sentenced, even, even if we were still housing them, we were no longer, no longer responsible for that. So is that?
I don't know if that happens or not, but.
Yeah.
They are supposed to.
Judge Oliver's rolling them out, isn't he, Tim?
He is.
He is.
And I have made a contact with the state. I called her last night and I said, hey, I got five inmates in the system, uh, that I need approved and picked up quickly. And she's trying to do that. The other six, which kinda goes back to what you were talking about, Keith, the six that, that we did yesterday, uh, or five or whatever was, numbers were, we got a problem, so we're gonna have to absorb some of that problem and start doing that work ourselves so that we can be more efficient. There's, uh, there's been, there's mistakes that, and it all comes back to, we don't know what they're doing. They don't know what we're doing.
When we say they and we, who are coming?
The mountain circuit.
Okay.
They don't under, they don't understand, we don't understand what they're doing and how they do things. We, they don't understand how we do things. So I think the best thing for us to do is just sort of take the bull by the horns and go ahead and do it. And they're okay with that. They're fine with that. It'll be quicker and more efficient. And then we can get those five guys out of our jail into another, into the system quicker.
Yeah.
It'll be worth it.
We're just having to spend some money housing inmates out. Is there a way in, I guess that could be deemed as an, maybe not an emergency situation, but could we go in and clear the logs quicker? You know what I mean? And, and get, and save the county that expense of that out?
I have been told that our activity here is greater than any of the other three counties. So I'm gonna ask them to put another week of trials in.
Yeah.
Per judge next year, uh, so that we can try to get that cleaned up. And we have already started talking about doing special sessions.
Yeah.
Special week of trials, which we need.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they can use senior judges for that and not stop the system.
Yeah.
Which is good. And it won't cost us anything.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, go to page two. And this was not something that I anticipated or I planned. Happened last week. Sort of a surprise. On my technical, my company called me last week and said that I needed to change software for my system. My system, uh, is antiquated and it's gotta be changed. And it's gonna cost me twenty-five thousand dollars.
Now, who called you and told you how to do that?
Icon Software. Okay, let's, let's back it. Right now, I'm spending, uh, you got eight in the budget.
Right.
Previous year, actual expense was fourteen hundred. All right, I'm spending thirty-six hundred dollars a year on, uh, software for my real estate. As of January the first of this year, I'll be spending twelve thousand dollars a year on software for my criminal, civil. I don't have a choice. I mean, I don't have a choice but to change. And so, okay, let's look for something cheaper. Okay, so I did. So there's, there's three companies out there that everybody uses or that everybody, that's available to counties. Uh, this company that I'm with is the cheapest. The next company up that is twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So I'm going to twelve thousand dollars a year versus twenty-five thousand dollars a year. The other company I didn't even call because I know we can't afford it. We're talking about a mega company. But, and they are all mega companies, but.
What, what are they saying's wrong with what we got now?
Uh, the, the software that we have now is called Delphi. I'm going to a case management system that's not on my server, but in the clouds. I won't own the software. They will own the software and we'll be renting it from them. The other company is the same way. They're all going away from this transferring data by phone lines or whatever they're, whatever they're doing. Uh, it's just a more modern, up-to-date software.
Do we put that on hold until we have Mr. Smallwood, our new IT guy? He, he is looking at a lot of stuff that we have in other counties, cause he, he tied in with several other counties on what they have and what they're doing. You might wanna contact him and see if, if he could, uh.
What's available.
What everybody else is doing.
That's it. I, I got to have a company that is approved by the clerk's authority. And that's the only three.
And we're currently with.
I'm with you, bud.
Yeah.
We're currently with one of them?
Yeah.
And are we staying with that same company? But this, a new product or they obsolete an old one or?
So the guy that had the company was an individual named Marty Hahn. And Marty, Marty was, uh, just exceptional kinda person. He just didn't wanna charge everybody a lot of money. So he kept the cost down as much as he could. He had probably sixty out of a hundred and fifty-nine counties, he was providing all of their software to. He sold part of his company off, and when he did, this company called Catalyst, who's based out of Texas, bought him out. And when they bought him out, for a while, there wasn't any changes, everything was okay. And then all of a sudden, they decided to go up on their price.
Are you talking about Icon? So when you reach Delphi?
Delphi is a software brand or a software, I'm not into that. But it's a type of software. And it, it, it stays on your server. Well, I won't need a server for that anymore. So my server should last me another fifteen years.
This is the second time we've heard Icon. Is that other budget gonna do the same thing?
Not, well, okay, so we are all on Icon or Catalyst. Me, magistrate, and pro.
Right.
I don't know if they use this web-based program or not.
Yeah.
That's what it's called, genie.
Are, are we forced into using that web-based program, or is that just something we wanna do?
We will be forced eventually, yes. And, and I said, okay, I'm pulling the trigger on this tomorrow. I wanna know when I can have it in, January first of twenty-twenty-six.
They're gonna be going up on him. They're gonna be going up on them.
They're going up on everybody.
Pro, magistrate, and magistrate, because they all use the same, they all use Icon.
So why not wait until we've, till we've?
Gotta do it.
Where you can get in line now, so you can receive it.
By January first.
January twenty-sixth.
And everybody...
They're not gonna just cut it off.
Mm-hmm.
If they cut it off, we're at the creek. And I, and they will, they're going to.
Yeah.
And the other side of that is, this will make, all right, so now, we do everything. Everything we do civilly is done by e-filing, which saves the space. We don't have to have paper. We, when we go to this new system, we'll be able to do criminal by e-filing, and that'll save a lot of
What you just explained to us, though, is they use us as a hostage. You gotta use one of these three companies, or you're not gonna be able to perform your duties. That, to me, sounds like that's something Chris Carr should be, should be, uh...
Addressing.
No, because you got three choices.
Well, I mean, you don't have more than three choices. I mean, I'm saying, I mean, it's just, it's just...
There may be other choices out there, but...
It's only approved, right?
But then there again, who's letting them get approved and, and who's doing what and what, you know, it's just...
Well, it's not so much...
I don't, I don't like to be told I gotta do something, cause this, this what we say you gotta do, and that's the only three choices you've got.
Well, I don't either.
It's not so much that as it's the only thing we can afford.
Yeah.
And, I mean...
There's other options. There's just more choices.
Oh, right. We can't afford them. You, when you start talking about, uh, the big company, okay, so for example, they're gonna charge me twelve thousand dollars a year for the support. They're gonna charge me, uh, twelve thousand dollars to convert all the data that I've already got in my system over to this new system. The other company that I already looked at wanted to charge me fifty thousand dollars to convert that data over to the other, to the, to their system. The other company charged another county a hundred and ten thousand dollars to convert their data over to their system.
But then again, are you talking about other county, but are you talking about counties comparable to, to our size?
Yes.
Or larger?
Yes.
Larger counties, uh? But I, I still, I still feel like something's not exactly right, all of a sudden, you know, within a year, and you don't pay, we have to pay this money and not get it until, what, eight or nine months from now, anyway? It's just, uh, it just don't seem like it's right for it to...
That conversion process that you're talking about, is that a one-time charge?
Yes.
So then it would resort back to what?
Twelve thousand dollars a year.
So you're gonna charge us twelve to move it from twelve for, from then on?
Right.
This conversion process, I tell you, they about got you, cause, uh, it's, it's not as complicated as they, if they make it out today. But they're on a charge report, and it's a one-time charge, and I don't know how you're gonna get out of it. Um, but it, it's, it's not as complicated as moving it from one server to the next, uh, or, or onto the cloud. But, um, either, in, in this instance, like here, we're, we're running it in some other ways. You, you're gonna have that one-time cost, regardless of what company you use. Like you've got thirty that's, uh, that's, that you can use, but I don't know whether you're on, you're not gonna get out of the conversion end of it. It's, it's, uh, it's ridiculous, but I don't know how you're gonna get...
So, so
I don't know.
Where we're at here, we're at eight thousand dollars on technical for last year.
Yep.
We're at ten now, and what are you looking at needing this year, fifteen? Twenty-eight-six total. Not, not adding the ten. And that'll be a one-time thing, and then next year, it would drop back down to
Twelve.
Twelve, right? So twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight-six, and get you, get you going for January twenty-sixth.
Hopefully, it drops back down to twelve.
Well, that one-time fee.
Some deal, they come back and raise it.
One of them's a one-time fee.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not mad at you.
No, 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 I understand.
You're just fair too, you know, and, you know.
And I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to, to, to find out what is out there, and I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Smallwood too. But when you start looking at counties around us, every county around us is either with Icon or a company called MicroPac, which is the second level company. I mean, there's just, that's it. That's who, that's all they're with. Now, when you start getting in metro, in the metro counties, they either develop their own system, which we can't do, or they, uh, or they go with that larger company, which they don't care about.
It's basically like a digital and analog phone. They gonna push the analog on.
That's, that's it, Keith.
So what?
I mean, uh, Chris, that's the difference between Delphi and CMS.
But I, I, one time, I, I was with a company one time, and we, we were using routing, and, and the cheapest thing that we could do would be to develop our own or buy from another company, so we'd develop our own.
They will.
And, and save money, and you didn't have to have that up every year.
Software.
Yeah.
But I don't know how this would work.
What, when are they cutting those off? That's another important question.
So I, what I understand...
Cause we've heard they're cutting LAS systems out there.
We, we've got the budget so much, like twelve, fourteen thousand dollars. And then we've gotta add another, for this year, we've gotta add another twelve thousand.
Ain't yet.
To the budget for that one-time cost.
Same thing we're doing now.
So it, it, it's, it's just...
So have we got a notice of when they're obsoleting the current system, or? No. They're, they're actually sort of fighting that, just to get in line. And I told him, I told him yesterday, I said, look, I've been waiting on this for ten years, and I was literally the second county to say, I'll take the new system I want. And ten years later, I still don't have it, and they're telling me I gotta wait till January. I'm not special, but why should I have to wait? I've been begging for this for years. And I still can't.
If, if they can't have it in place till January, we shouldn't have that jacked-up monthly cost for
No, we will not.
Six months.
But the other side of that is, I didn't want y'all not to bear the budget for the whole twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if, have we already paid this year's maintenance?
Well, this is, what we've got right now is just through February, it looks like how much is that, this year's run, two thousand, around two thousand dollars? More than that, isn't it?
About, a little over, about thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
What's, what's, if we go to this new deal and account for not having to pay for those first six months, what's our bottom line? So it'd be six thousand dollars cheaper than that twenty-eight, so we're looking at twenty-two something?
Yeah, this will change.
What, what would it be for just the four to first? Is each of that, twenty-eight-six, start from July through June of twenty-twenty-six?
January going forward?
Two thousand, two hundred bucks.
Right.
We won't pay it now.
That, that twenty-eight number includes the first six months of expense that we won't actually have.
Wait a minute, I understand what you're saying. I'm trying to figure it out.
Yeah. Cause if it's a twelve thousand dollar annual fee...
Right.
Then that should turn into a six thousand.
What I'm trying to do is keep you from having to come back in January and amend the budget.
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, we can, if we know it's twelve thousand dollars for the full twelve months, if we know we're only gonna have six months, we can put that six months in, but pull the six months that we're not spending out. And then next year, we'd have to add that six back in.
Right.
I'd recommend talking to Mr. Smallwood first. I mean, that's... He can, he could, he may, he may could do something different. And he may not.
Right.
But either way, it's gonna cost us more money.
Mr. Question Mark May.
Need to, need to talk with audit and technology people.
That's what he's there for.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Mike, why didn't you get?
Now, you know, he don't do anything for us. No, I'm not saying that's bad, Keith. I'm just saying, you know, he don't do anything for us.
That's right. He'd hate not to clerk the court.
Right.
Be does for the county.
Yeah, 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 I understand. I don't mind.
Do we have a, a definite, we still don't have a definite, have we gotta have this right now? Is that right?
We, we gotta have it.
We do gotta have it.
We gotta have it, yeah, I mean, okay.
At some point right now.
Sir?
At some point right now.
I, it would make, it would make life a whole lot easier right now.
But we still can't get it until January.
January.
At the earliest, yeah.
But I gotta pull, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull the trigger this week, so I can get that January. Uh, but I'll talk to him and you before.
Or the state ready, ready nowhere, and, uh...
Well, that comes up a lot, why? We can budget what you've got to have right now, but that other twelve thousand dollars that won't come in effect until January. We can go ahead, we can amend the budget at that time.
Oh, I don't know that.
We're the one who has.
Go ahead and budget in six thousand.
If that's something we're gonna do, we're gonna budget those six months in.
Yeah, well, it's twelve, it's eighteen thousand, actually. Cause it's twelve thousand dollar one-time fee, plus six thousand for half the year.
Right. Carrying us from January through July.
There's a twelve thousand dollar conversion fee that's a one-time.
So you, you gonna budget the, the half, the six thousand, which was going to affect really in January?
Go ahead and budget it, then, if Mr. Smallwood comes up with something, we can always pull it back.
Randy, you're gonna have to figure these numbers out, because there's a, there's already some technical money in there that we're not gonna do.
Well, the twenty-eight thousand is what he was saying would be the total, so you just pull six off of that, and it'll be twenty-two.
Does that sound right?
I think so. I was just trying to make it easier on y'all. I mean, it, it don't matter how you say it, it still comes out the same, you know?
So how, how much is it? Twenty-two range?
Twenty-five.
You got it.
We got ten, put twenty-five in there. Don't spend it all. Twenty-two, twenty-five, something like that. Why don't you just go ahead and budget it, so you won't have to come back in January and find the other?
Well, if you add the six months, would, would they require us to pay for the full year if we don't get it till January?
I think, I think they will require us to pay it
I think they will too.
before they start.
But a full twelve months expenses if we're only getting six months of service?
They, they normally bill one time annually.
Well, they don't do, they don't deal with our sys, the, the calendar we're on, they're, they're doing it from January to January.
How about have them do a written estimate on what that's gonna cost, so we know?
I got that. I got that.
In their January, this is probably gonna split years for us.
That's a split year.
So we may split some year for them.
January to January.
Yeah. That's what's happening.
Say we know what the budget from July.
And when the money will be due.
Correct. That'll work. The perfect time, just be that.
Time table.
Whatever we have to do, we have.
Estimate. And when the money will be due.
Correct.
Hey, I...
That'll be personal.
Gotta do what the county's...
What's Mr. Smallwood's first name?
Thomas, they're, they're Catholic, are you aware of it or not?
Okay.
All right, the rest of that looks beautiful. May I have any questions?
Hey, that telephone call says...
Is there anything we can do about that?
That's what we're kinda looking into, is...
Okay.
It's kinda some expenses, you know, some options there.
There was another one, this question too, Mr. Smallwood too.
Yeah.
Cause he gotta earn his money.
Yeah.
All right, give us a rundown.
Right now, it's, we're, we moved the audit fees for, to zero, moved the legal fees to zero. Uh, we're gonna, Tim's gonna give us some, get us an estimate, timeframe of when the money is due for Icon, and how much is due at when. Uh, other than that, the rest of the department stays the same.
Works for me.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
We're gonna do the full time. Well, I see how much money we gotta give.
Well, I guess we need to look, look at everything.
You're gonna look at that.
See what... Cause they, all of that'll change on that front page.
Yeah, right.
When you change towers, all the benefit stuff, all, inch, all that's gonna, it'll change, and that'll give us a more accurate figure.
We'll have Arlene do a, a scene that has it all on there.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh... I need anything.
That it?
I think I do, am I pretty?
Yeah.
Have fun. Back to work.
Does every office in the courthouse need a, a copy?
You don't need a copy, do you?
Do we have a copy station?
You gotta, we'd have to buy more vehicles.
It seems like everybody...
We would have a transport van to move them around.
You know?
I'm talking about a closet.
Give everybody a vehicle that's live to the copy machine.
Maybe we oughta put one copier in one of these extra vehicles we got, let it mobilize.
No, everything in that courthouse, why can't they use? Why don't we pay for, for a copy? I guess we'll get the details.
Now, now we got libraries.
Who you got reading?
Randy, what page librarian?
Seven, seven.
What?
Okay. If we had the number right there, it'd be a lot easier, it'd be some seven, seven.
Next year, I think we can, we should consider putting the
Hey, how are you?
Page number beside the department.
I mean, that way we have that.
How you feel about that?
Hi, how you doing? Thank you.
He doesn't hear that enough. It's about like the copier.
I brought a friend with me. As a matter of fact, Dale is your appointee to the, the library board.
Well, good.
So thank you very much for
What's your name?
Excellent help.
Dale Hogan.
What page are we on?
What page are we on?
We are on page seventy-seven. And next year, we're gonna look at putting the, the page number beside the department.
Yep.
Are we?
For the, uh...
Randy is, Randy's gonna look at this.
Page seventy-seven.
Then we could refer to this as the table of contents of the legend.
Boy, this one sure is easy.
I just brought some handouts that I thought, um, the first one that I did, of course, shows, uh, clubs and different programs that we offer at the library throughout the year. Um, we offer, you know, hotspots, Chromebooks, um, books on CD, I meant on, uh, audio books. Um, we've got Learning Express, Galileo, all kinds of park passes. Like if you wanna go to the Atlanta Zoo, you get four free tickets just for coming by the library and that sort of thing. But that's just to kinda give you an idea of what goes on in the year. We also do passports, notori, uh, notarizing, just all kinds of stuff. But that's just for your information. Our hours are Monday, Wednesday, uh, Monday, Wednesday and Friday from nine to five, Tuesday and Thursday's nine to six, and Saturday nine to one.
And they do have a copy machine.
And we do have a copy machine.
Do you own it or do you rent it?
We got an external.
They own theirs. They don't expense. Please mark.
We own ours. Okay, and then the second sheet I've given you is the stat, the stats from twenty twenty four, because we're only into, uh, March of this year. So this is last year's stat, and I went ahead and I left Maysville, Nicholson and Talmo, just so you could kinda see, those library, uh, areas are compatible to our circular, you know, our area. Uh, so there are our, we checked out total circulation, thirty two thousand five hundred and eighty four. We circulated six thousand, uh, ebooks. Um, the middle there on online bonuses, that's not broken down by individual libraries, but we offer ABC Mouse, World Book, um, uh, e-reads for kids, audio and ebooks. And that tells you how many of those were checked out. Now, whether it was Homer or P, uh, Banks County, I'm not sure, cause they didn't give us that information, but that we have that. This is loans that we sent out, loans that we received. Cause we're able to share books throughout the state of Georgia and bring books in from anywhere in the state of Georgia that's a kinds library. Um, we added a hundred and seventy five adults and a hundred and six juvenile new patrons last year. We had twenty nine, or twenty nine thousand two hundred and ten people come by, that come into the library and use it. Um, I'm excited about this. You see the wireless use? We have outside wireless, so people sit in our parking lot, and they, over seven thousand interactions happen from the parking lot. Um, and then the total, you know, the thou, nineteen hundred or whatever come, had, was inside. Um, last year's total circulation for this, the end of the year, the year before, twenty twenty three, was twenty five thousand eight hundred, and you can see that we've already increased that by what? Seven thou, or ten thousand books that we circulated, or seven thousand books. Um, patron visits are up. Um, there's our programs. We did forty seven preschool programs, children's programs inside the library, and adult programs and programs of all ages. There was community outreach where we did a lot of programs, like at the primary school GM, um, at the park, or wherever, you know, we needed to go for festivals and different things like that. And those are the numbers that we reached for that. We had fifteen adult volunteers that spent six hundred and one dol, uh, one hours. And you figure that's a lot of extra hours that's volunteered and provided that we don't have to pay for, as well as the teen volunteer hours.
That is a lot.
It's crazy.
Now, how do you keep up them door?
We have a door counter when you walk in. Actually, it's not, it's not a good one, because it doesn't catch it front door. They're gonna fix that with the new renovations or the addition and everything. But when you walk into the main library where my copy machine's at, you walk under a counter.
You walk under a counter? Does it get you going back out?
Yeah, well, that's how it counts as one. If you come in, then I'm in trouble if I have a half a person left somewhere.
You got a half. Have you ever had a half?
No.
Okay.
That's good.
I've got some people that act like they're half.
Easy.
He's not been in there in a while.
Okay.
Are you talking about Taylor?
No.
Oh, Bo?
I was talking about that other half sitting over there between.
Bo, he hasn't been in in a while.
Sorry, Danny, they're talking about you.
I don't think he was.
Y'all get any questions?
This, this one don't ever change much, does it?
It's set in stone pretty well.
Now, we're over right now for some reason.
Mm-hmm.
Apparently, and that says as of February, so we'll have to deal there.
We didn't have anything budgeted for building maintenance.
Okay.
For what building?
Yep, and we spent twelve oh five on it. That's that extra, you see.
But that says of February, correct?
Correct.
And there will be no more expenses?
Shouldn't they? I mean, I don't know what those expenses were for. Can you tell me what those were for?
It was for, and whatever Kenny showed up and.
Was it your rails or something?
Well, he took those back, so he didn't leave those. He brought them, they sat there for a while, he never put them up, and then he, you know, so that, I don't know. Was it the one in the front? I don't know.
I don't, it's.
I don't know.
Whatever he's done for the last eight months over there. There wouldn't have been anybody else that I'm aware of.
Air conditioning, anything?
I called him and he came the other day about, oh, the tiles, because when they do the bathroom, they're gonna complete the renovations on the bathroom as part of the grant that's from the state. Um, and so I asked him about tiles that they had when Johnny and them were working on those bathrooms, where, where they might've got, you know, cause I couldn't find them. And I was asking him if he knew if they had taken them or if they had put them somewhere, so we're still looking for that. And Chris, have you, um, the easement thing, is that still, Taylor, is that still on the table to be? Have you, first of all, have you been?
She, she told us we didn't need that.
Okay. Have you been getting the emails that I've been sending you from the, the, uh, the architect?
When were they sent?
Uh, yeah, one day.
Yeah.
No, usually if she sends me an update.
I haven't got anything recently, no.
Okay.
It's been a few months since I saw anything on it.
Well, let me tell you what the recent is, and I'll go back and send you the latest thing I had. Um, they have put it online. Two weeks ago, they had a contractor day where the architect was there, and five contractors showed up to look and get questions answered and different things like that. The next Thursday after that, uh, they came back with people to look at fire and lights and different subcontractors, I'm assuming, that would be helping them get their bids together. They had until last Friday to, um, submit questions about what they had questions about that was in the plans of, uh, the, there's an eighteen square foot, eighteen hundred square foot, um, conference room, I guess is what you would call it, meeting room or whatever, that we'll be able to hold our programs in. Uh, have author visits, we'll have tables and chairs if we have some kind of workshop or something like that, um, that will be added to the, as you turn into the driveway, it'll be the first, the grassy spot that's there. They're also picking up on the renovations that were to have been done, the lights changing, the bathrooms being, uh, swapped, so that they're making them handicap bathrooms, cause we didn't have handicap bathrooms available. Um, and they will be replacing all of the inside lights, because we are currently still on ballast, and they're gonna change those all to LED lights, and that will, that's all included in the thing.
Should help on power bill.
Well, that's what I was about to ask, but when we do our efficiency study on whatever else we did, we're probably needing to include that in there.
Can you explain a little bit about the proposed addition and how that's funded and?
Yes, it's a ninety ten, um, thing that came from the state through the Georgia Public Library System in the state. They have given us nine hundred thousand dollars, so there'll be a hundred thousand that will be, according to Beth McIntyre, who was our, um, who instigated all this and started it. Um, she said that they would do the nine hundred thousand first, and then anything after that, for that extra hundred thousand, didn't necessarily have to be spent. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
That they would spend their nine hundred thousand first, the state would spend their nine hundred first, and they would do, so I think part of the thing. I was as blindsided as everybody else, and so was Charles Turk and Doug Cheek and Ann Hopkins when this all happened, cause we were not fully aware of what was going on until it was pretty well said and done. But anyway, but it, it is a good thing, and we, we need, we needed it, because if we didn't, and if they had been approved for it, and we didn't accept it or didn't go forward with it, we would have never seen any help again like that.
What if the bid comes in over nine hundred thousand? Who's on the hook for it?
The state. The people that are, that, that is through the state, so the Piedmont Regional Director is the, is the, the one in charge of it, um, of the money. Um, and then the, uh, state. So I, I don't know what to tell you, Bo, they, you know, I told them this was my first rodeo, so I really, you know.
Cause if the state's locked in at a nine hundred thousand grant, uh, and let's say it comes in at one point four, one, one point five.
Well, I wouldn't think they would take it, cause they've been told.
Who's on the hook for the extra? Us at the school and the city?
Are you saying if after you accept the bid from the company and they go over to a hundred and, I, I mean, I don't.
I would probably have this lady call and get on our agenda and come explain this a little bit before they get started.
Whoever, whoever's in charge, before we finalize.
Cause at the end of the day, that's a county building, so.
Well, you know, yeah, and it is.
Yeah.
And the money was given to us a year and a half ago.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it'd be two years, July one, that we, you know, that things have been like laying low.
Mm-hmm.
And because of the water issue, which we're not gonna have to do, they're not gonna have to replace the septic tank, you know, that first, that was one of the things that were gonna triple size the septic system, and then they were gonna have to have easement for the school and all that, and that was where that came in. And that was all by the help, by the time the health department looked at it and everything, they decided they didn't need that, and they, because it was not gonna be, you know, it may improve, it may increase the size of people in there, or amount of people in there. But those three hundred people weren't gonna be there six days a week going to the bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
Every day. So, um, they, they did the water and what we were, you know, we had to turn in water, how much water we had used over the past five years and that kind of thing. So that was brought down to that, but I'll be happy to get back to, um, Lori, who is an, like, the architect out of Athens. And then, um, Kelly McIntyre was elected last night as our new, so she's gonna be kinda slim and none, because she, the, the original director that was over Piedmont Regional that started this through the state is no longer part of our system. She's moved to another system.
Now, is the city and the school still giving money like they used to?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. My budget for a year, and I think I, I, you know, my budget for the year comes from three entities, you, Board of, uh, Education and the city. Uh, my total budget is a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. You give me a hundred and eight. Sco, the school board gives me seven thousand, and the city gives me whatever, thirty five or thirty eight, that makes the difference, whatever it is that makes up a hundred and forty five. So that's all the money I get for the year is, that's what I have. That's my budget for the year.
Is there an IGA somewhere on file that, that spells out how this is funded?
Be a good question.
To what?
Is there an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement somewhere that spells out how this is historically funded and how it's supposed to be funded from the founding agreement?
I will send you whatever paperwork they have that, I mean, I don't have it, but I will get you paperwork and I will get her in touch with you.
Well, he's talking about not the building, but just the funding of the library in general.
See.
I don't know. To be honest with you, I've dealt, I've dealt, I've dealt with this thing for years, and I've never seen a contract that, what the percentages were. Yeah, I know it started out this and this and this.
Well, you all started out.
I, I feel like it was all verbally agreed.
I've never seen.
Way back when.
Well, the only thing I can tell you is, is that Mr. Maxwell's wife was one of the board members and stuff at the time, or one of the friends, or whatever. Debbie White, Buster Garrison and Milton Patterson were the three.
Who agreed.
Jenny, can you just make note that if we don't have one, we need to get one.
And, and those are the people that.
These percentages, these percentages were set back way back with, with them.
I don't think there was, I don't, I don't.
Not percentages, but dollar amounts.
When we, when I first started, everybody gave fourteen thousand dollars. Everybody. That's all the budget was for.
So how did it get off so one sided to the county? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't have a contract.
That's right, and, and.
Well.
Fourteen, you know, three ways, and then now we're at a hundred thousand thirty and seven. That's got.
The, uh, school actually went down.
Yes.
From fourteen to seven.
That's what I was gonna say. Plus, plus the, the dues. Everybody paid us the same amount of dues.
Right.
Few years ago, how long ago was it when I came and y'all, we split it to twenty five hundred dollars to the region? It's been two or three, four years ago that they went down. The school board still pays the five thousand dollars a year for dues to be part of the Piedmont.
And they do a lot of y'all's work.
They do our, they do our auditing, they take care of our books, they write all of our stuff, they, you know, so that's their thing. The city keeps the grass cut and other things like that. Um, we're provided trash.
We don't do nothing.
Well.
Well, we do more. We be. But see, and, and I think the, the city of Homer, theirs for years has been thirty five, thirty seven thousand dollars.
And they asked me to send them an increase this time, so I have asked for money from the Board of Education and the city this time.
What year was that building built?
Nineteen ninety three. And I've been there since ninety six. So, um, what was before that, when I had to do something, um, when the audit came in, and this was the first time they had really, really audited through the Board of Education, they wanted a written agreement about what was supposed to be going, and what I sent them, all I had was our bylaws and constitution, and it says that the Board of Education would provide, um, the auditing and the bookkeeping and that kind of stuff. And that, I mean, I don't know what else it said, cause I, you know, but, um, Taylor, to answer your question, I have no idea.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just need to look, see if we got one, and if we don't, we need to get one.
And since so many people have changed, who knows where it was at when it was originally done. There may have been something in nineteen ninety or whatever, when they first started this process.
And, and I like the, the idea of this state.
You were in early nineties when this happened, and then I came in in ninety five, and when all this.
There, there was a contract between the county, I think it was in ninety one or something like that, we made give percentages for a dollar amount at the time.
It was dollars.
We was there, I was in there when it was built.
I would think ninety or ninety one was when, you know, because the building was completed in ninety three, so I would think eighty nine, ninety, somewhere around in there. Um, it was after the new primary school was built, and that was eighty eight, because we played on the playground next door and watched, the kids were fascinated watching them tear the old store down at our dentist office and moving it and that kind of stuff and putting the new building up. So, um.
I have same years, it's, we've redone the old courthouse.
But as far as what the original was, I don't know, but over the years, you know, I have gone and just, I mean, something had to be done. I, there's no way at fourteen thousand dollars a year I could be running that library today. So I'm sorry that y'all feel that I've picked on y'all, but.
It wasn't.
It does say Banks County Public Library on it, so it, you know, and it's the only one.
That's an expensive sign, ain't it?
What?
That's an expensive sign, ain't it?
It is.
Well, I hope that you're happy with the services.
It's, it's worth what we spend on it, I guarantee you that.
You think about now, two thousand and twenty five, in nineteen ninety two, though, that many years, there's been a lot, lot going on and going up and everything.
Yeah, and I've been there twenty eight, and I have tried to hold it as low as I could hold it and keep it going.
We're not complaining. Unless we are, we're just kinda looking at the, if it's split three ways, that this thing's still split three ways.
Well, when the, when the three entities, when Charles and Ann and Doug met with Beth McIntyre and answered questions, got, you know, whatever, about this hundred thousand dollars. At that time, all three entities said that they would be willing to work together to figure out how to come up with it as it was needed. So that's all I can tell you.
Would that be a meeting space like if we had a.
Right.
MRC complex over here?
Exactly, yes.
Why should we not use that then?
I don't think there's room over there.
Well, there will be when this new million dollar renovation's done.
Eventually they can, but now.
No, no, now you, now I can barely hold my programs, because we've just outgrown everything. I had four, fourteen babies there this morning, or little ones this morning doing a, um, story hour. And by the time you had fourteen and five parents, you got nine, you know, twenty people plus, you know, so the multipurpose room has just, we've just outgrown it, which was, you know, once, which is like that.
So how many will the new multipurpose room hold?
Would be as big as this building, but this room here?
Eighteen hundred square feet it probably.
This is a little big.
Yeah.
It probably.
It's gonna be long and it's gonna be thinner, because it's gonna go from the front of the property to the back of the property on the end there, and I should have brought the pictures, and I, sorry, I.
Could be like a thirty by sixty or something like that.
Which end of, is the building on the?
It's gonna be on the, when you turn in to go to the school.
That's eighteen hundred square foot.
It's right there on that curb.
Going that down.
Right.
Back to where the buses go around.
Right. And it will, and they're, they're doing an eight by, I mean, a whatever, that, an eighteen hundred square foot, and then they'll have a wraparound closet, if you will, to store all the tables and chairs, so those will have, so that will be included in that too. It will have a drop down screen, projector and all of the, you know, sound system and everything, so you'll have it to be able to use to do for a bigger problem. Yes, they did, and I did write it down, but it's almost three hundred a day for the whole library to be in at the time. So, the multipurpose room we're losing was for fifty without chairs, so it's gonna be, I think it, I think they told me two hundred and. So, the multipurpose room we're losing was for fifty without chairs, so it's gonna be, I think it, I think they told me two hundred and.
Yeah, absolutely. But what about parking?
Parking?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Why we gonna build a building, we ain't gonna have a park?
We don't have, we don't have to, yeah, we're gonna build a double decker.
They are gonna hand out umbrellas if it's raining and let your car go.
That's right. Uh, well, one thing is, that's the problem with, we're so landlocked right there, that we couldn't do different, um, because our parking is so limited.
But, I mean, the elementary school parking lot's pretty close.
Well, see, and originally during the, during the, um, summer, it's always open.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at the time, I can't remember, it was Mr. Irwin, I think, when they built the new elementary school. Representative Irwin at the time told us that the library could use that parking strip across from the library that faces the library on the end. Uh, we have not, we use it during the summer and that kinda stuff, but we don't use it, my staff parks out there during the summer, but during the school year, the teachers use it to walk down the hill. Cause summers, of course, were busier than we are during the mornings and stuff at school.
Y'all got any other questions?
No.
Nope, I think we're good.
Doing a good job.
Appreciate y'all.
Keep it going.
And let me ask, did y'all get the, the, the latest paper for Suzanne Rogers to reappoint her come?
You did, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, thank you.
Thank y'all so much for your continued support. I'm sorry. Thank you, I appreciate y'all. You don't know, and I apologize, like I said, if you feel that I'm picking on you, I'm really not.
No.
I just gotta ask.
We all know no better than that, Miss. Now, if he was up here, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I moved to recess until one thirty. Got a motion and second recess till one thirty, Keith?
Uh.
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 Uh.